And Chris and Sheriff.
Okay.
Screams.
Remember that day when I asked?
No, Sheriff.
Just passing on.
Remember the day I asked Maggie?
Sheriff.
She was.
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Then I asked you.
Try without the mic.
I did. Maggie rejected.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, what I'll do then is call a special committee of the whole meeting to order. The agenda involves a continuation of the workshop relative to the secondary planning process and the active transportation network. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Being none then, we'll go forward with the continuation of the presentation. I see there's been some revisions, and so we'll do fast forward on some of the area that we've covered, and then if my memory serves me correctly, we got as far as page thirty-one at the last workshop, and then, and so we'll go forward from there. Maybe if you could just highlight some of the changes that are in there then. Marion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you recall at the last. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. You'll recall at the last workshop, we got to a certain point, as a mayor mentioned, around page thirty-one, but we did have some homework to bring back to you, and we were able to accomplish a lot of that in the interim period. So I'm gonna just jump to the angular, transition and angular plane section, which is about slide number fourteen, if I can get my most to work here. It's too far. And you'll recall that we were asked to take a look at the situation where we have the urban center abutting a street that is, and the opposite side of the street would be residential area, and my takeaway from that was that you wanted to ensure that we had a, not only a transitional in terms of height, but also streetscape. And so what we've done is we've gone through and done a couple more cross-sections that are now included in your PowerPoint. This is one of the angular planes from, in the area of the hospital, between Queen Street and Davis Drive. This is what we presented last time, and we were asked to take a look at how we can better transition in terms of a streetscape to, in this case, a stable residential area, which is to the, to the south of that, the urban center of that location. So what we've done is we've done some research in terms of other jurisdictions and how they've done similar transitions, and the schematic at the top gives you a better view. What we've done is we've set back the development on the, in this case, it's on the north side of Queen Street, the same amount that the development is set back on the south side of Queen Street. So it's like for like in terms of setback, so you have a similar streetscape on either side. So in this case, it's seven point five meters, and then the setback on this, on this side is seven point five meters as well. In some other areas within the town, it may be as small as four point five meters. So the way we will draft the policy is to ensure that whatever is on the, in the current policy regime, in this case, it's a zoning, we would match it like for like on the opposite side, and we'll word appropriately to achieve that. Again, it's creating a streetscape transition as well as a height and density, or a height transition. What we've also looked at is a number of, this is the forty-five degree angle, this higher degree, and we are still taking it from the property on the opposite side of the street, but taking it now from an eye view, which is one point seven meters, and applying a twenty-two degree angular plane. And so the result of that is a much lower, much quieter transition to that, to that adjacent neighborhood. We've created a schematic, and I'll have Jason speak to the schematic to demonstrate what this illustrates for you.
So this was done as a quick street view rendering, because the question came up at the previous workshop about what it might actually look like as you look across the street. So this is taken from a person who'd be standing on the, at the edge of the lawn, on the south side of, a particular point on Queen Street, looking north to a building that we looked at fitting within a twenty-two degree angular plane. Now, what we found in doing that was, given the depth of this particular parcel, we took an actual built, a modified built product, so an actual building that's got sort of feasible floor plates, feasible unit sizes, what we found on this particular spot was even though the height permission is up to six stories, that the highest we could fit in this case was a five-story, once we applied that twenty-two degree angular plane. That's not to say that there'd be nowhere in this area where a six-story could possibly be fit, we just looked at this one particular site, and given the depth of that parcel, the need to be, need to have those setbacks, the highest we were able to get was five stories, and where you'll see the five-story is, is this unit right here is your fifth story. So it's set back, it's set back the furthest from the street. So not so much to sort of demonstrate, you know, architectural styles or whether it's a particular like this form of building, the idea was to look at, because there's a question about how imposing a six-story building could be on the north side of the street if you're standing on your property on the south side in a context like Queen Street. And so this is intended to give you an idea of what those depths are like, and what that overlook and crowding on the street might be like within that twenty-two degree angular plane.
What we'll do is if we could deal with these setbacks and the angular planes, and then we'll come back to questions on that, so we'll go through the angular plane piece, and then we'll come back to questions, okay?
Okay, now, this one hasn't changed. This is the typical schematic at Terry Drive and Young Street, and here you're, you have a back backyard, so to speak, on Terry Drive that would be backing onto the backside of development on Young Street. Again, we've applied the forty-five degree angular plane from the rear lot line of the adjacent property. Similarly, here, Davis Drive, this is just a typical on Davis Drive, it would be the north side of Davis Drive where we have the shallow lots, again, applying the forty-five degree angular plane from the rear of the properties on the north side of Davis Drive. Similarly, here, this is at Herb Kane, this is what we had demonstrated to you previously, and this Herb Kane is another situation where you do have front doors on a streetscape that would also be potentially a front streetscape. So we've done another rendering to show how the like-for-like on each side of the, of Herb Kane would translate. In this case, again, it's seven point five meters setback and the twenty-two degree angular plane taken from the one point seven meter eye level. Herb Kane?
It's in behind chapters.
What was I saying? Herb Kane? Herb Kane, sorry. And this is another one that was, has been added, and I apologize, there's not two houses on this side of Irwin. Irwin Crescent is a street just to the north of the hospital area, and again, the development in this area would be backing on the backyards of these homes. And some of you may know that there are, we didn't show landscaping, there's a fair number of trees that would separate at the dark green area, just in, at the right-hand side of existing residential area. So that's an example of the forty-five degree angular plane applied to the rear of Irwin. And this is at Watson Avenue, and Watson Avenue, again, is in the area of the hospital, and Watson has houses that front on to Watson Avenue, so we have a, another situation there where you're, we're sensitive to the streetscape, and again, we've applied the like-for-like in terms of setback, twenty-two degree angular plane taken from one point seven meters. So that gives you an illustration of the, of the scale that would be achieved or could be achieved in that location. We also were asked by you to look at Schlesser from Davis Drive, and I believe from, from the rear, Schlesser, and in our policy, we've indicated that the forty-five degree angular plane wouldn't necessarily apply to Davis and Young, because we do expect a higher density and a higher height. We do require by policy on Young and Davis, when you have the higher density, a six-story podium, and then you have to set back three meters or more from that podium, so you won't have that straight wall all the way up, you do have a transitional step back to create a less imposing feel on the street. So this demonstrates that the forty-five would not be achieved on Young Street with the Schlesser application, and I do have a slide to show you what is at the back for both Schlesser and Kerbal, just bear with me here. This is Kerbal on the, on the Young Street, it would definitely be below the forty-five degree angular plane, their maximum is eleven and twelve stories. Now, if I can just minimize this for a moment, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just take you to the angular plane from the rear at Kerbal, this is taking it from the property line, there's, the property line wiggles and waggles a little bit, so I've taken it from the first property line, so they're basically within that forty-five. If you're taking it from the second forty-five, because it widens out a bit, it would be, the development would definitely be outside the forty-five. And on Schlesser, this is the forty-five degree angular plane applied to the rear at George, and again, it's being, the forty-five is taken from the property line on the east side of George, the property line of the adjacent residential buildings. So they have, this application has approved, has maintained the forty-five degree angular So those are the, are the angular plane slides, Mr. Mayor, and if you have any questions, we're happy to address those.
Do you have Counselor Emmanuel, then Counselor Spanga, Regional Counselor, and then Counselor Twenty. Counselor Emmanuel?
Thanks, Mary. The twenty-two, what, why was twenty-two picked? Twenty-two degrees?
That's the standard out there in terms of our research in other angular planes. It's a lot much lower, it's half, pretty well half the distance of the forty-five, and it does push the development down lower. I mean, you could pick anything, you can pick thirty-three, you know, you can mix and match however you want, but twenty-two is one of the standards out there, and it's the most rigorous of the lower angles.
Okay. No, I was just, I didn't realize it was a standard, I've only ever heard forty-five degrees, so, okay, thank you.
Counselor Spanga?
Couple of questions. Go back to, if you go back to the slide that showed, Jason's slide of the Queen Street there. Setbacks, would the setbacks be dictated by, this is going to be an OPA, right? So would the setbacks then be captured by the zoning bylaw? Okay. My question to you, and I think we touched about it, we touched on it the last workshop, and I think there were some suggestions for tightening up the language and so forth to make it municipal board proof, or somewhere like that. With this, the setbacks are the legislative, like, you have blocks here that are set back right from the first floor up and so forth. Would I have an opportunity here for justification in terms of the engineering work and so forth when I come to the actual setbacks? Or are the setbacks going to be dictated, you know, after ten meters and so, ten meters and so many centimeters, there has to be a setback of so many meters, and then following up and so forth, and that is tied down? Or is it, again, or does that leave it open for a planning justification or engineering justification as to why or how you can, or why not you can meet those setbacks, and maybe and try to mitigate them through landscaping and other areas? Or is it going to be tight language that just, everything is amendable, I guess, as long as, you know, there's an appeal process, but how tight does that?
So what's being proposed in the policies is actually to have, have it, I guess I would say tied down pretty tightly, so that the policies do actually say what those setback numbers are. In other cases, urban design guidelines can speak more generally to, you know, providing setbacks that appropriately frame the street and don't overshadow the streetscape without putting actual numbers to it, and that's another way to go. What's being suggested in the secondary plan is to be more prescriptive, and actually identify sort of at, at what height of podium you would have a setback and what the depth of that setback would be. So this is a little more prescriptive than, than what some other municipalities or other neighborhoods might opt for in terms of a guideline.
So, and that would be verbalized in terms of guideline in the official, in the secondary plan, and then tied down with numbers in the zoning, in the, sorry, zoning bylaw?
It can be. The other thing we're exploring as well is, and I think you're hitting the nail on the head, is how do you figure out all these little jigs and jogs? Is, one thing we're exploring is whether we should be considering development permitting for the implementation of the secondary plan. There's only so much you can put in a secondary plan, we've got a fair amount in the plan to try to give some certainty, but there's only so much you can put in a secondary plan before it becomes overly prescriptive.
Okay.
So we are exploring that, otherwise your zoning, not unlike with Schlesser, where we had, you know, so many stories that could go up on George, and then it had to be set back so much, and then it could go up another, so many stories. So we had to do all that as part of the zoning to achieve the forty-five degree angular plane and translate that into a zoning bylaw.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, but you're, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. The other one I wanted to ask you, in terms of tying down the zoning bylaw and getting, not more prescriptive, but a level of comfort that is pretty tied down. I think we had some discussion around going a certain, a certain order of heights or densities or whatever you want to call them, over, let's say, a first five-year period, and then reviewing that out over five years and see if there's opportunities or an appetite to increase or whatever. If we were looking at something like that, and I'm throwing this out, this is like, perhaps I'm reaching, but through a community improvement plan, would you be able to further tie down these requirements if you were to incentivize it to a certain extent? And I don't know if you can answer that question now, or if you need to come back.
I think you can incentivize, certainly through the community improvement plan. I don't know, I don't know that I could articulate beyond that at this point, the level of detail, because we haven't given, at least I haven't given that a great amount of my time.
I guess permit, development permitting is another way of getting it, we touched on. So if you could, you know, because we are planning for a certain amount of incentivification, or incentives, sorry, for that area, so just wondering if there's an opportunity to tie it further down through that. The other question I had, when you showed the lots, and I think in respect, I'm gonna get down to the word here, Terry Drive, and you showed the angular plane from the end of the lot, and I understand that these, these angular planes and these drawings are produced through GIS, but is that the depth of the lots, of the residential lots, is reflected, or is that an average, or is it just?
That's at a particular point.
Okay.
So the depth may vary slightly on Terry Drive, but that was at a particular cross-sectional point.
Okay. That, which brings me to the other question, and I understand that we have a memorandum of understanding that is signed both by the developer and the residents in the area in terms of the Kerbal development on Young Street, and that took a long time to get to it. But one of the things I noticed that we looked at the angular plane, if you want to bring that slide up, from the end of the lot, and one thing that has always intrigued me about that parcel of land is the topography, and that the fact that, you know, we see that topography is lower there, where I think that little block is supposed to be a single-family dwelling, but we know that that is actually a lot further down. And so if that angular plane was taken from the end of the residential lot in the gully down there, I would assume it would affect the development considerably.
Yeah.
So as we go through the secondary plan and the corridors, are we taking into consideration the topography of those lots as well?
That would be taken into consideration at the development application stage, where these are illustrative only, and you're correct. If you were to move further north, behind this building, the land rises, and you'd be taking that angular plane farther and farther up. In fact, by the time you get to the top of the slope, you'd be even with the roofs of the houses.
Right.
To take your angular plane up.
And that's the same, same, and you get into the southeast corner of Davis Drive and Young with, so is, so that will have, so then there'll be further amendments to lower the height based on the topography of the residential lots, Jason?
The, the location of the residential lots could influence that, how that angular plane, we're putting policy in place that deals with the angular plane, but we're not putting it in place for every single situation, so it will have to be looked at in every situation to ensure that that angular plane can be met.
Because in some areas, and again, I'll refer to the southeast corner of Davis Drive and Young, behind the big retaining wall, behind the big protective wall, behind the Goodwill, the old Wabla site, you have a drop of probably six meters, five to six meters. That's a huge difference if you were to take the angular plane from that area. So that's another consideration, because that's probably three or four floors, easy, that would come down.
Yeah, that situation, your angular plane, your houses are way down here, your angular plane's starting way up here, and.
Right.
The heights are not going to have so much of an impact there, because the topography behind those homes already is having a pretty significant impact on those homes.
Maybe there, but in other areas, not the building, the height, but the shadows might be impacted considerably by it. So how are we going to deal with that through the zoning bylaw or through specific areas or blocks that might have those specific characteristics to it? Not, not saying you have the answer now, but there's something that should be looked into.
Yeah, and if I may, there is still a requirement for a shadow impact study, and that deals with a lot of your sort of odd topographies. So as I mentioned at the last workshop, angular plane becomes a bit of a, a bit of a proxy for shadow impacts in sort of a typical situation, but in introducing the angular plane policies, we still left in the shadow impact policies to deal with the kinds of things that you're talking about, where the angular plane is not always your best, it doesn't always sort of stand on its own in terms of being a good way of orienting your building massing. So for some of those cases where you've got a six-meter topography drop between adjacent buildings, then yeah, you're going to want to, then the shadow impact study will still come into play in terms of what are the shadow impacts on the rear yard or the, or the front yard of the adjacent property.
So that will prevail, that shadow impact policy will prevail over the angular plans?
I'm not sure if prevails is the right word, but it would be that all of them apply. So there isn't, there's not a hierarchy of which prevails over which, it's that you've got to meet all of the tests, the shadow impact study being one of the tests, the angular plan being one of the tests.
Okay, thank you.
Well, on that, Mr. Mayor, again, that brings me back to how do we tie it in, so that we don't get into a situation where we're bogged down by, you know, going to a board to try to decipher which one, is the angular plane more important than the shadow study? That's why I'm trying to find some clear guidance.
If I understand it, they all have to be met, so it's not one overrides the other, but they all need to be satisfied, all of those requirements need to be satisfied. So that's the consideration there. I have you at ten minutes now, Counselor, thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. The, to speak specifically of the Queen Street example, would the, would the policy we currently have, and I'm thinking about the transition policy in relation to the hospital areas, would that need to be amended then if this were to change? I mean, I would assume it would have to be considerably amended?
Yes. Yes, the draft that was circulated to you, the red line draft.
Yeah.
It would have to be modified to address the slides that we've provided to you today.
The red line, but also other policies, right? I mean, I don't think this covers the, some of the hospital precinct policies we have in terms of transition, transitional policy. All that would have to be amended as well?
Yes, and it comes under the angular plane, transitional and angular plane policy.
Be more than that though, right? Because currently, Queen Street doesn't allow for six stories, so that would have to be changed?
Well.
And the transitional policy speaks to uses only within existing buildings, that would have to be changed, no?
The wording would have to be modified, but I think.
That's the same as a change, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I guess where I'm going with this, and I look at the other examples you brought up, and Irwin does strike me as being something that has some similarity here. I think Herb Kane, to be honest, is, it backs, it's across the street from, currently, from commercial usage, I think there's some expectation that they're not across the street from current residential, for example, and they're not, and I'm sure they wouldn't be shocked to anticipate that someday there could be something different there, and perhaps something of a denser nature. I think that's even been spoken about in terms of, in public about those lands, but these, this Queen Street example really still stands out for me considerably. I, as I said, I think bringing the other example forward perhaps requires some thought, but Queen Street, when I look at it, is still a fairly decent stretch of, right across from. li- right across from s- single-family houses and currently single-family houses, and currently our permissions, I believe, allow for, uh, medical uses or some conversions, but within the existing structures. So very restrictive, very much trying to, and that's a policy we have in the books, trying to show respect for it as a residential neighborhood, while being somewhat flexible in terms of uses so that it could be more compatible with the, the hospital that it, that it backs onto. But this, this Queen Street stretch also has another street of sorts in between it. Uh, and, and so you're talking, whenever we talked about this process and the secondary plan process, for me, it was always about the Young and Davis corridor, and by and large, ninety percent, ninety eight, ninety-nine percent of what we're addressing here is addressing building or, or, or development lots on the Young and Davis corridor. There's a few exceptions here that we're, that we're speaking to now, and the Queen Street being the biggest one for me. Uh, I still, I, even with the angular plane changes you made there, I just, I don't, I just simply can't, we can have all kinds of explanations of policy and ways of approaching, et cetera, but a- as an elected official, at some point, you've got to go with your gut instinct of what you think is right and what you think is wrong. I don't think it's right to introduce five and six-story buildings across the street from a significant row of established, single-family residential houses, uh, and I can't support that. So whether we have to deal with that as a separate vote at some point in the future, um, that may be the case, but, and, and I'm sure there might be different opinions around the table and that's, that's fair, we do that all the time, but for me, I, I just, I couldn't, I couldn't support that direction. Um, one thing I will do to help us at least get to a decision point and try to understand it, at least for myself, try to understand it better, is, um, I would like to ask that staff, you've given us an option here, but what I'd really liked is back is, I think as we reach some of these decision points that we've got in front of us, there's three or four or five areas, at least for myself, that still need to kind of get finalized, um, I think we need a sort of a report on that issue in particular, not just a slide. And so what I, I would suggest is that, uh, uh, and I don't know if you want to motion now or later, or, um, but I'll tell you what, I'll just say what the motion is and I can, we can either let people speak or deal with it then, but the motion essentially would be that staff bring back a report that examines, uh, Queen Street from Prospect to Roxborough and, uh, and it's at staff's discretion or other areas with significant public interface, uh, or sorry, residential interface, um, and, uh, look at alternative treatments. And those alternative treatments would include removing an area altogether from the secondary plan and/or, uh, reduced, uh, reduced heights and densities. And I, I, you know, as one will throw it out there, I, I could feel very, very comfortable with our existing policy on Queen Street the way it is. It allows for some uses that are compatible to a future hospice or the hospital, but in a way that's very much in keeping with the neighborhood, but if we didn't go there for myself, I would, I would have to see a maximum of three stories personally, and it would need some policy that went along with it about residential treatment of the buildings, the type of facades, et cetera, that, so that it felt somewhat in keeping with that, that is, as a, still as a residential area.
I have two other speakers. Maybe we can come back to that.
Sure.
Before we move on, okay?
Okay.
Counselor Twain?
Thank you. Um, just to, um, add on to that, this sort of area of transition, uh, regarding Queen Street, that is only, uh, regarding the position between Prospect and Roxborough, but not, uh, east of Roxborough, is it? What's, what's the, what's the area? I, you know what, I forgot my glasses today too.
South Hill.
Is, is part of this, uh, trend, like this new angular plane, would that be in effect from Roxborough up to Alexander?
It would be in effect where anywhere we have a, for lack of a better word, stable residential area across the road from the urban center.
Right, but it doesn't, but that goes up to Alexander, does it not?
It goes to Alexander, yeah.
Okay, so this would apply to, is this twenty-two, this what you're talking, what we're talking about right now, what Regional Counselor John Taylor's talking about, this twenty-two angle that you're proposing, would that be in effect from Roxborough up to Alexander as well in that area, like including Grace?
No, not in Grace. Grace is within the urban center.
Okay.
This is at the outer edge of the urban center.
Prospect, Roxborough. Oh, Cleveland.
Alexander's here. Well, Alexander, it doesn't go over to Alexander because our lot's still back.
West Roxborough.
On a street at that location.
West Roxborough.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I missed what you said I was talking, so what was that?
The, I don't know.
I just want to make sure I understand exactly where these boundaries are, and I'm seeing like this blue area up to Alexander and I just, I'm, you know, I just, I want to be absolutely sure where we're talking about.
Let me just flip back a few slides here, see if I've got a slide that shows that area.
That's my.
I don't think I did.
That's the healthcare center.
It's, it's where there's a road adjacent to the urban center, and in this case, that, that basically is between Roxborough and Prospect.
So how, how do we, how do we apply then Grace Street, which would be a, isn't that road within the urban center?
It's internal to the urban center though.
So what the, how does that get affected by this policy?
It doesn't.
So it would be no change?
No, it, it's meant to provide that transitional streetscape between an existing residential area and the urban center.
Okay, so would not, and, and I apologize if I'm not comprehending this, is this, wouldn't Grace Street be part of that though? Because Grace Street's within the urban center and it's a residential street backing onto the...
So, so Grace Street, the idea, the, the forty-five degree angular plane would apply throughout the urban center, so in the, in, in the Grace Street context, it'd be the forty-five degree angular plane? What we're, what we, what the twenty-two degree, um, which is what that, the, the rendering was showing, the idea of introducing a twenty-two degree angular plane is specifically for a couple of unique contexts where you've got the, the urban center boundary, so the new development in the urban center fronting onto a, basically a boundary street to the urban center, where on the opposite side of that street, you've got low-density residential. So that, so the twenty-two degree plane would apply on Queen Street between Prospect and Roxborough, um, on Grace and in other, and other internal parts of the, of the, of the urban centers, uh, it would be the forty-five degree angular plane.
Okay, so, so from, then that includes going up to Queen Street in that portion of Roxborough to Alexander? On the, so the, the, the north side of Queen Street over would be included in part of that forty-five degree angle?
So...
From the Davis Drive?
So from Roxborough to Alexander, if I'm not mistaken, it's the only part, the only area that's actually within the secondary plan is basically the Davis Drive frontage?
Okay.
It's, it, the, the study area as much, isn't as deep in that location.
Cause it looks like it winds out as you get up to Alexander, that's all in, in the boundaries, the way it's mapped in.
Yes, but so it picks up, it should pick up the, the rear of those Davis fronting par- parcels, so, um, so as we, as we've currently conceived it, the twenty-two degree plane would, that would, the forty-five degree angular plane would apply in that location, not the twenty-two degree as, as it's currently.
Great, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, uh, that's, sorry, that was, oh, it wasn't where my, that wasn't where I was going to start with, but, um, I just ask a question regarding, uh, the twenty-two angle on Watson Avenue, and Watson goes in between Bolton and Lundby's Lane. How does, how do we, um, how do you, how do we sort of grasp, like, deal with the areas on Bolton and Lundby's Lane south of Watson, like?
That, that area is all slated for redevelopment.
Okay.
Through the secondary plan.
And what's, and that would be considered as six to, six to tw- uh, sorry, two to six stories in that area? Or would that be included in the four to fifteen stories?
Well, it's, it's, um, the frontage is in the gold or medium-high density, and that's four to fifteen.
So anywhere south of Watson?
That's on page twenty-two, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. And to the north of, um, to the south of Watson, um, it's, it's in the blue designation, the medium-density, density designation, which is three to ten.
My, my only concern is, I guess where I'm, my concern is, how, the, the residents that live in all this area, how well aware are they? I know we've had so many public meetings, how well aware are they of these changes that are, you know, I mean, that were being proposed?
Now, in terms of knowing which residents intended specifically and from which ward, um, we didn't actually ask their, their location at the time, so I don't know that I, um, can answer that with any degree of certainty that, that they are aware of the...
Fully aware of what's being proposed.
Of the secondary plan process even.
Right.
I mean, you've, you've had the one meeting with them.
Right, yeah.
Um, but we do have an opportunity for another round of meetings, so maybe that's something to keep in mind, yeah.
Be a good opportunity to make sure that the people in the area are really well aware of Queen, that whole area, Queen Street and, and Erwin. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirwin?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, uh, very much to our planners for bringing this back, and I thank John Taylor for raising that issue with regard to Queen Street. What I suggest to members of council, you really must go out there and physically look at the area that we're talking about, because, uh, Grace Street goes across Roxborough into the hospital, but that street really now is, there are two or three vacant houses on that street that face northward, northward into a reclamation area that the Conservation Authority just picked up, and you have to really physically stand there and look at it. And a suggestion is, is to do some photographs of that area, so all members of council can look at it, because it is a particular area. Uh, when they built the Roxborough Retirement Residence and they built it right adjacent to a very large residential home, um, in that particular case, the residents were in favor of the construction of the Roxborough Residence, and they still are. Uh, they love it because it buffers, uh, their house from, uh, the traffic on Davis Drive and quite frankly, at this time, the construction. So, and it's, it has become a landmark, actually with the weather vane on top, and I believe that building is six stories, uh, comparable to Amica and, and Renessa, uh, other two retirement homes in my area. And then on Queen Street, uh, back off of Queen Street, it, along the laneway, there is an apartment building that is over six stories tall. Um, and basically, it's the side houses, it's the side of the house that looks on to this area, and what is in there now are vacant homes, okay? And there isn't one resident in the area who doesn't want those homes taken down, because quite frankly, they are an eyesight, and I believe they will all come down in the spring. So what we do here is going to be very important, uh, to that area and, uh, to all of council and generally, but to me specifically. So whatever we put in the policy is going to be important. It was to be, um, retirement residence in that area, but they've done the survey and they have at least a five-year supply of retirement residences, all of them in Ward Two, uh, so the hospital is not looking at a retirement residence in that area at all. Um, so it's, it's very important what we do, and I thank the Regional Counselor for, for, um, raising the issue, but you really have to go out and look at it physically, uh, because, uh, on the south side of Queen, it's, the houses are on an elevated plane almost, and then it, it comes down, okay? And it comes down with a extension of the eastern creek flows to the hospital, which the conservation, so in the north part, there really is nothing but a beautifully reclaimed, uh, river valley. They really have done a neat job on it. So thank you very much, and I thank Regional Council for raising that, but you need to have a look physically. It, it's different.
Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you. Um, I, one of my concerns, and we're sort of, uh, going back to the discussion we had about Queen Street and, uh, some of the heights that were, you know, across the street from existing residences, um, on, on the original, um, on page eighteen of the, of the, um, the, the plan that you, you gave us, one of the concerns that I had was for, um, New Lock, New Lock Drive and Savage, and what you have here, I'll just give you a second where you can see, um, you've got medium density and low density in that area, um, the, on the area that is, uh, east of Savage, you've got high, medium-high density, and my concern, I guess, is that that is in fact adjacent to some of the homes that exist in that area. And if we're looking at stories of up to fifteen stories, I, I have issues with that as well, and the same argument goes for across the street from there, and I know you're talking about the, um, Nature's Emporium Plaza and the Metro Plaza, I guess I'm just, my concern is with the heights because that, that is, I mean, those are existing residential homes in that area. So I would imagine that the argument that some of my colleagues have about Queen Street would apply to this as well, so I'm just trying to get at, um, where you're coming with, with those, those height numbers, and I mean, I, I'm just really concerned with, with the direction of that plan, do you...
So if I, I understand you correctly, you're looking at the, um, Savage Road and Sommeil Valley Drive?
Yes, yes.
That transition, yes. It would be treated the same as what we're, we're describing, um, for Queen Street, because it is again, it's, it's a residential area, the transitions with a boundary road between the urban center and, and, uh...
Right, and I'm not, yes, and I'm not, I'm not denying that there is, you know, plans for residential growth in those areas eventually, I'm just concerned with some of the densities, the numbers that you have with the heights, those kinds of things. I think, um, I have, I have some concerns about that and, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't like to see that, uh, I, I just feel that if we have a policy about, about that, I think, uh, I'm concerned with some of the, the existing homes in the area and how they're going, going to feel about that, so, I mean, I know we're gonna have this discussion as it comes up, but it's, it's just one of the concerns that I have.
Okay. But, but as I was saying, that twenty-two degree angular plane is what would be applied, so it's a much quieter feel on the street.
Right, but, but still...
And, um, the minimum is two stories, the maximum is six.
Right, but if, well, that, but that's, that's on, that's on the, um, area that is in the, the metro and the, and the nor- um, and the, uh, Nature's Emporium Plaza, but we also, you also have a high density, oh, sorry, a medium density and high density for those, for the areas a little bit more north of that. Again, I just, I, I'm just concerned with some of the height.
Now, if I'm reading, um, if I'm reading the map, Mr. Mayor, um, according to the description, we do have a park in there adjacent to the Hydro Rightofway, those are, there's the Hydro Rightofway at that location on the, on the east side.
East side, yeah.
Um, does provide a fairly large buffer to any of the residential areas further to the east.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the key is the transition and the angular plane as, as to whether or not that's accurate. Uh, if I could, uh, coming back to Queen Street, do we have any, uh, as I understand it now, what faces south on Queen Street is, um, all restricted towards the existing residential buildings that, and the usages can have medical usages to them. Have we given thought to, uh, applying that angular plane from rear of lot as opposed to from the street and how that might help as far as the transition goes? So you'd have the existing two-story limit, and then from rear of lot, you'd go, you'd go, how significant would that be?
Oops.
So the first, the first lots, for example, there on Queen Street, if you would go to the rear of the residential lot, right?
Here.
A little to your left, go over to, just over the Y, for example, over the two stories, how much impact would it be if we, if we moved the angular plane across the street to the rear of the lot that faces Queen Street? And that way, we'd still be protecting the, the residential look, and, and how significant would that be in relation to the transition to all of the other areas that are, that are abutting residential areas? Would that, is that something that we've considered?
Are you suggesting take, I'm gonna use the arrow here, taking this angular plane and applying it to the rear?
The rear of the two-story, six-story lot existing.
Developable property.
Yeah, of the develop...
Okay, the road allowance, this is the road?
Yep.
Queen?
Okay.
The rear of the lots on the south side.
No, on the other side, on the other side, the rear of the...
Twenty-two degree frontage.
That's, yeah, that's the frontage there, so you'd want to go to the rear of the, of the existing lot lines there.
And, and run it this way?
No, no, and then go, go, they, apply that, just move the forty-five degree angle over there to the rear of the lot. And what that would do is effectively preserve the residential look on the, the street that's facing the residential properties.
Keep the current policies on Queen Street.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, the current policies do, uh, permit that transition to medical uses and so on.
In the current buildings.
In the current buildings.
And, and, well, they can, unless they're heritage, they can be removed as well. Um, so you're suggesting that...
Yeah.
Basically maintain the current policy, which is... Basically maintain the current policy, which is in the, the current official plan. Now, we, we didn't do that, you know, in this recent draft, obviously, because we saw this area as being a mixed-use area. We'd have to give that some consideration, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DiMuccio, are you finished?
Yes.
Regional Counselor?
Thank you very much. Yeah, essentially, that was one of the options I was suggesting was to, to leave that portion of Queen Street under the current policy. I, I hear you that you had considered this as a mixed-use area. I don't see this as a fit. I'm, I'm actually a little bewildered why we would be reaching over to Queen Street to try to put in six-story buildings ala the Roxborough, which is on Davis, in this area. I, I don't get the pa, I don't get the drive for it, the passion for it, or the need for it. In fact, a big part of me is saying, we've had a conversation, I've had conversations with counselors where we've speculated, you know, how much do you think we'll see in the next five to ten years on Davis or Young? Would you think we'll see some ten-story buildings or some five or six-story buildings here and there? Well, I don't know why we would open up Queen Street, which is essentially residential in this area, to potentially six-story buildings when we're hoping to see those occur on Davis Drive and, and hoping to support the transit and the jobs and the kinds of street life we're trying to create there. I, I just think this is opening up a, a, an exit stra, I, I just think that it doesn't fit with the community. It takes, it takes, it gives people an option off of Davis and Young. This was a, this was a plan, a secondary plan that we were taking on particularly, if not entirely, about the corridors of Davis and Young. And so with respect to Counselor DiMuccio's concern, I, I don't blame her for being concerned about the interface, but for me, those are very different areas. For one, there's a green buffer. And secondly, that is the Young and Davis corridors we've talked about redeveloping and people have known for a long, long time that we're going to see some redevelopment intensification there. That's what it, that's the whole design, that's the point. And our, our official plan and even the secondary plan talks about protecting existing residential neighborhoods. And while Counselor Kerwin is right, you need to walk this area, and I'm sure most of us have, but I'm certainly seen this area, walked it, driven it many, many, many times. It still is essentially residential and we have a policy that reflects that. So I feel pretty strongly about it, but I, I'd wait to see what kind of information comes back. We can explore angular planes in different locations is one way of doing it. There's different ways of addressing it, but at the end of the day, I would like to make a motion that asks staff to bring back a report specific to, well, it doesn't have to be specific to, but let's say, addressing Queen Street from Prospect to Roxborough as well as, what was the other one across?
The north side?
The other side, it was.
Watson?
Watson.
Watson, as well as Watson and any other areas they feel that staff want to include, but including those two for sure to be, to, to, to be, and that report to include options of removing them from the secondary plan. And obviously, the Watson area would only be a certain distance, not right to Davis. And, or, or reducing the, the heights and densities allowed to be more compatible with a residential. So I, I don't want to say exactly what the solution should be because I won't pretend I know, but I think in general, we need to try to find something that's.
Mr. Mayor, can I address just some of the philosophy that we've, and perhaps Jason has some other thoughts as well? The hospital district, in terms of the development of the secondary plan from, you know, two or three years ago forward, we saw that as a unique area that needed to have a fair amount of flexibility to achieve some of the visions that, that the town has been talking about, either in higher education, research and development. And it is a very small area at the moment and it was considered to be one of the key areas where we could direct some intensification based on the boundaries that were in our current secondary plan. So we were trying to make that area as, as nimble into the future to be able to respond to those other interests and, and, and direction that we saw the town trying to foster. So that's part of our thinking and Jason, if there's anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, I think it's, you know, one of the constraints of looking at, that whole part of the study area was just finding areas, you know, given that it, it is sort of, sort of the eastern, eastern anchor of the urban center, it's a scenario that's got high transit access, but it's also a scenario that's highly constrained, given the floodplain issues and the, and the depth of parcels on Davis itself, there aren't a lot of really viable development parcels in that general location. The, the Queen Street area, the Gray Street area is one of those locations, which is why it was looked at as an opportunity to carry some density in that, in that spot. But, but certainly, you know, good points have been raised and I think we can look at all of those different alternatives in terms of what could be an appropriate forum on the Queen Street frontage. The fact is, is it's not, it's not a significant number of units that are being considered because it's pretty, it's a, you know, even if it goes to the maximum of six stories on a, on a fairly limited linear frontage, it, it's not a huge number of units one way or the other in terms of the overall yield for the study area.
Okay, well, Jason, thank you for being willing to look at that. I will say that it's the first time I've heard of that piece of Queen Street being looked at as a research and development center or a higher education center, but we are going to be nimble, so that's very nimble and I'll, I'll look forward to those, those reports coming forward. But I, I will, I, I just, I think at some point too, and I'll be blunt, I mean, we're getting to the end of a very long process and at some point, part of the reason we're sitting here, and we're sitting here as a committee, the whole, is because at some point, council is going to have some direction about the report and about the overall study. And while ninety-seven, eight, nine percent of it is excellent and we've gone through a lot of work and public input and I appreciate immensely the amount of work, I think at some point, we also have to be open to council direction, maybe not being completely in sync with, with staff's vision for certain areas, but I hope we can, we can find. And, and I think that, I, I do want to be clear, we had, we had discussions in this area around a hospice and that hospice spoke to, to having it fit with the residential area. The residents were happy because we said we were going to have a certain height and that it was going to be higher at the back but lower at the front and treated in a residential way. We spoke about a vision for that area that could fit and work. And I'm open to trying to, to, to use this in a fuller way than each house only, you know, that, that use has to be within the existing structure. But if we think of the hospice treatment and extend that down this length of road and start thinking that we could do this in a way that feels residential, looks residential, but allows for some more density and opportunity, then I think there's probably a fit for, for the community there. But I don't think for a second, four, five and six stories straight across the street from my front door, if I lived there, is the right fit. And I hope we can find a, some sort of balance in between that. Thank you.
So that's the, the transition piece. Good, thank you. Counselor Sponga?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't those properties from Prospect to Roxborough, aren't they all under the control of property of the hospital or not?
No.
Many, the vacant, I think, was Counselor Taylor or Counselor Kerwin was referring to a number of vacant homes? My understanding is that they are under the control of the hospital as you get toward the east end.
Right. Is there, is there intention from, do we know if the hospital has a master plan for that area? In, in similar terms of how the discussion we've had with the Upper Canada Mall and trying to take that whole area because, I don't know, I don't know the hospital's intention, but I assume that they probably would like to secure that, that whole strip of land eventually. If that is the case, is it possible to isolate that and, and have a, a hospital master plan to see what the hospital is contemplating over the next fifteen to twenty years in terms of capital investments and, and build forms?
Maybe if I could be some help there. I think we already had a site plan approved for the, for the easterly side of, of that area, but, and I'm sure it's a matter of public record, but the hospital is no longer the owner of that property. I think it's the Beswick Group that's the owner of that property. So, so, and, and it's, and it's already subject to a registered plan of subdivision or not a, but a site plan approval. And if there's any changes to what's been approved there, and I think it was six stories, was it not six stories for long-term care? If there's any changes to that, that has to come back to us anyway, right?
Okay.
So it's. Counselor Kerwin, maybe you can add to that?
Never, it was sort of partly long-term care, but basically it was a retirement home. And what happened in that area was that Roxborough got the jump on them and they started around two thousand and nine and opened in two thousand and ten and it's been a success story ever since. But they, they've done surveys and they know that five years out, there are places in retirement homes within New Market. So the, the retirement home business is saturated right now within New Market. None of them are a hundred percent full and, and that's not their intention. Some are seventy percent full, some are eighty percent full. And Renessa is maybe thirty percent full at this point. So Regional Counselor Taylor is, is quite correct. It's the in-facing of this area and what is going to be there. But as the mayor has pointed out, apparently this property now has fallen from the hospital to the Beswick Group. And quite frankly, I don't know what they're interested in right now, but what I do know is the sooner those houses come down, from my point of view, the happier that I will be before one of them goes up one night in, in flames because they're all vacant and they're falling apart. And I just want them down and I, I've tried to work with, with the hospital to get them down and I have been successful in getting one of them down, but I hope in the next six months to, to have that block of land between Gray Street and Queen and Roxborough and where the hospice is going to be. And there's a lovely park in there too called Sunny Hill Park. I hope to have those houses demolished.
Thank you. Counselor V.
Thank you. Along the lines of Counselor Sponga and Regional Counselor, it, it was pretty clear when we're all looking at it that Queen Street was included because Grace is basically out of play in that area, if you, if you will. And this was first, I also heard that, that the hospital had some actual plans for that. So at this point, I, I am quite reluctant to go forward with that, you know, to give permissions in that area. And we're talking about Queens here between Roxborough and, and Prospect. Basically, without the hospital coming forward and perhaps they do have a master plan or maybe it's just a concept at, at this point, but it's really to get the residents informed and engaged in that. It seems like there's something on the table that we just haven't seen yet and I could, could.
Something on the table right now.
Well, I, I just heard that the hospital did have some plans for that area.
The, the hospice has gone through due process.
Not the hospice, but some other.
But the other, the Beswick proposal has gone through due process.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I'm referring to though. I'm talking about on, on Queen Street, I believe you mentioned that the hospital had some plans regarding an education facility of some sort?
No, what I was saying is that in that area, because there is limited space, Jason referred to the floodplain being very extensive. There isn't a lot of space in that general vicinity and I know the, there is interest from the town's perspective to provide for a higher learning, research and development and so on. So we were trying to be as flexible as possible, not saying that the hospital was interested in those things, but we were as, as a, as a community are interested in attracting those uses in conjunction with the hospital. And there just simply isn't very much space generally in that area, but not trying to say that the hospital is specifically interested.
Okay. I misunderstood, so we were just being a bit speculative on what can be there.
We're trying to be planners.
Trying to be planners.
Trying to be planners, providing flexibility.
Okay. Again, like my colleagues on council, I am a little bit reluctant to, to be going that far south on this when you're running so close to, basically across the street from resident, existing residential community. And, you know, I, I just don't think people there have been prepared for this and I'm not convinced of necessity of it either, of having to go, to, to go to six stories across the street from there, but perhaps I can be convinced, but at this point, I'm, I'm not.
As a matter of record, I believe sometime in March, to be confirmed, that the, the hospital will be coming forward, making a presentation to council and maybe this can be part of that discussion, but I do know that there's been some dialogue going on with their planning staff as well as with our planning staff in terms of the longer range. They also have the Tenetronics Building, which has a substantial amount of acreage there that would probably, in my view, not necessarily in full board's view, would probably cover their needs for the next ten years in terms of the development or the redevelopment on, on, that could take place on Tenetronics for some of the institutional areas. And I, I see that this has gone forward to as far as Alexander Road, so it does capture that Tenetronics Building as well, does it not?
Yes, it does.
So, you know, I, it may not be as pressing, knowing that we're going to review this in five years, I'd have a comfort level in having a, a stronger transition policy along Queen and maybe on the north side as well and, and other areas where we're, we're directly facing residential areas, some considerations to how we could have a stronger transition policy. And I think, I don't know if the Regional Counselor wants to draft up a resolution or a motion as we go forward.
I made it.
Okay. Can you summarize that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there wasn't a second. The motion simply was that staff bring back a report that examines Queen from Prospect to Roxborough, also Watson interface and any other areas they feel need to be included or, or you can just phrase it at a minimum, those two areas, if that's briefer, and that that report includes options, including removing from the, the secondary plan area and/or decreases in density, height, in keeping with residential area or residential interface.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion then, seconded by Counselor Manuel. Counselor Manuel, do you wish to speak to it?
Yeah, no, I was just, I was in the queue to speak and I was just going to ask for a motion because I think we've talked about this for almost an hour and I think there's some broad consensus about this Queen Street, at least revisiting it. I feel like this is becoming the Queen Street secondary plan and it's a more substantive document, so I think we've spoken enough to it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Regional Counselor, do you want to speak?
Just a comment. Whatever we do in that area, we have to be extremely sensitive to the environment. The park to the, to the west of the, of the house they turned down is subject to flooding, even though we've done extensive conservation work to the north through the hospital lands. That area is, and it will bear me out, I think, this spring because we have a lot of snow out there, that often that area used to come up almost over the bank and flood the house that was to the east. So it's a, it's a sensitive environmental area and what we do in that area, we have to be very, very careful and I totally agree with the, the Regional Counselor with that area. It's a, and there is a part, when you go from Roxborough to Alexander along Queen and Grace, that is a solid residential area, okay? They're all residential homes in that area and they do face from the, from the north to the south on, on both streets. So they don't face onto Roxborough, they face onto their own street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if it's captured, I don't see the motion, but I mean, for me, it's a transition to residential areas, so if there are members of council who have areas where they feel like they have the same concerns of the transition to residential areas, I wonder if we could bring that forward to the planning staff as well to see if that could be included, just as, as part of the intent of the motion. Okay, further discussion on the motion? Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm glad you said that, I would agree. I mean, earlier I had my concerns about the Sawmill Valley area and Young Street, so I would like that included.
Say that again?
The, the area that I had brought up earlier about Sawmill Valley and Young Street, if that could be included, that would be, that would be great.
So we could deal with each of those areas as we go forward as part of that, the recommendations that are coming out of this motion, okay? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So that is, thank you. All right.
I was comfortable with the direction to staff. I didn't. We're looking at that area, but I, I thought that staff would consider other areas for the transition. Is that?
The motion is very specific.
Yes, yes.
I think Queen, Watson and other areas.
So, yeah. So, we're okay? All right, good. All right, let's carry on then, Mayor.
Okay, I think we touched on, on the densities and heights and there was a request to add a third option. Now we're calling it two A, so this slide does include the third option raised by, by Counselor Taylor at the last workshop. And I don't know, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to pause for any comment or discussion around this slide or whether you want us to carry on.
I have the Regional Counselor in the queue, so we'll, we'll speak to that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion around it. The motion will be that staff bring back a, I guess what I'm trying to do is move us towards decision points, but in a, in a way.
towards decision points, but in a way with process and information, not jumping into anything too suddenly. And do recognize in that we've had, come in for some time, I think it was raised over a year ago, that I raised a motion that there would be a separate and unique decision point in relation to height and/or density. So this is a motion that staff bring back a report. And I appreciate this inclusion here and sort of brings it to our attention, but I, you know, even though I lean strongly towards option 2A, the one that was introduced at the last meeting, I still need, you know, some analysis from the two of yourselves and staff about any issues you might have around any of these. So I think the motion then would be that staff bring back a report that analyzes any related issues to options 1, 2, and 2A to a future, to a future committee of the whole. And at that point, we can start to move towards a decision, but I think, and the only thing I briefly say is that I think, and I'd also suggest that in that analysis, the 2A options around the maximum heights versus the maximum height with bonusing. Again, those maximum heights, I'm more feeling strongly that the maximum height with bonusing, or in other words, the original height caps remain as our height caps, and that the bonusing come within that. But that, within that number, I'm not married, those were sort of put out there as a potential. Staff thinks it should be, you know, 16 to 20, or 15 to 20, or, you know, 10 to 15. There's maybe some guidance there, too. I don't think, I think that would be quite helpful as well. So it's just a report back on, staff report back on option 1, option 2, and option 2A.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Counselor Vay? Okay. You wish to speak to it, Regional Counselor?
No, I think I've covered it.
Okay. Then Counselor Vay has a second.
Okay. My only question, and I think Regional Counselor, John Taylor has covered it, when we're looking at our growth targets, and I look at 2A, obviously a 2A, which I'm actually in favor of, but will accommodate our targets for that area. That's really the only thing that would push us in a different direction if that became too big of a challenge.
You're going height and density, don't you think?
Never, no, that's true, but there is a relationship between height and density. So that's all I'm saying, because I'm just looking at page 44, where we are talking about our planned, and I just want to make sure that, I'd hate to contradict ourselves, voting in favor of one thing, and, you know, so that's all. So I'm just bringing that to your attention. Otherwise, I'm definitely in favor, particularly in 2A. I'm in favor, but as long as we're able to meet our growth targets within 2A.
Thank you.
Yes, if I can quickly respond, we have done sort of a quick analysis in terms of all three options, and whether or not they can feasibly carry the same sort of population and job yields, and then the answer is yes, they can.
Wonderful.
So I think if we were to look at some further analysis, we could confirm those numbers, and then I think what would probably be most different between the three options is the massing and the form that you get. So we could talk about looking at a couple of representative blocks, and how you achieve the same yields of population and jobs with the variance in the height limits. So obviously, you know, it's the tall skinny versus the shorter, fatter kind of notion. And put that out as sort of a visualization of what those different heights might mean in terms of.
No, it's very promising that we'd be able to reach our growth limits at a lower height, if you will, because that's really what a lot of people are talking about. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, we really only have targets that we have to be adhered to at the Provincial Urban Growth Center, which is also the regional center, where we have the 200 persons and jobs per hectare, and the 2.5 FSI. So that's kind of the benchmark that we are, you know, if you're really, you know, looking hard at what you have to meet, that's the, really the only hard targets you have to meet.
Okay. One of the areas that I'd like some consideration to in the report is, if you take a look at option 2A, from 17 stories to 20 stories, is only three stories, whereas option 2 is 15 stories to, say, 20 stories. At what point is there enough of an incentive to add the additional stories? I think that's, that almost has to be a market request, is where does it really become of value, and how do we create that in the bonusing provisions? Okay? Good. Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. Yeah. And Jason, when you raised the idea about the shifting and what it does to the built form, et cetera, I think that is part of the analysis. The only thing I would say is that, you know, what is now the maximum height with bonusing was previously the maximum height without bonusing. So without the bonusing, we felt we would get a built form, I assume, that wasn't unattractive in that scenario. However, having said that, that does leave the one question I had that I wanted to ask at some point in the process today, and I could have missed it in my read and rereads, but does there, and maybe it's that it doesn't, we don't speak to it specifically here, or maybe it was and I missed it, but what about the, we've been talking a lot throughout this, about the design review process or panel? Where does that, because that's so important, then, when you get to those kinds of questions in terms of excellence of design.
Yes, I'll have to browse for it. There is still policy related to that implementation section to the town may consider, I can't remember the exact wording.
That's what it said, yeah, okay.
I think it's still a May policy, but I have to double check, but that designer review panel would be.
That's right. I do remember that it was a May. And as long as it's phrased as a May, that doesn't, nobody could ever object to us putting something like that in. So May doesn't weaken our position in any way. I was just saying, we may or may not do it, but if we do it, we have the authority to do it.
Correct. And frankly, you don't even necessarily need an official plan policy that says you're going to do it.
Right.
The council can put in place a committee, if it wants to put in place a committee to advise it. So this, I think the policy here sends a signal, but even that's not entirely necessary in order to establish an advisory panel.
Right. And we can, and we have done this on a one-off basis as well. So if we, if we get something very quickly after the secondary plan, we can still implement a review process or panel or external review in terms of design. Right? So we're not limited in any way, ensuring that we get a good built product. Okay? Good.
Thank you.
Any further discussions with respect to the motion? All those in favor? That is carried. Okay? Let's carry on.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we did touch on the interim development policies. These are the policies where we have, a number of landowners were indicating that they wanted to have some interim development in advance of redevelopment. They felt that there wasn't a market for wholesale redevelopment, so they wanted some wiggle room. We had put some policy in place for the Upper Canada Mall, because we certainly heard loud and clear from them, and we had put in a maximum of 1,000 meters squared, and/or greater than 1,000 meters squared if the addition was the first phase of the multi-story development. But we've gone back and reconsidered that, and I gave you a number of scenarios, you know, pictures of what 5% and 10% would look like at the last workshop. So these, this is just a schematic of one of the development blocks. The middle block, or the middle picture, rather, shows what a 5% increase, either as an addition or as a standalone building, would look like relative to the scale of the existing buildings. And on the far, my far right, is the 10%, what it would look like as an addition or as a standalone building. And I ran a number of scenarios for you, just to give you a picture. You'd still have to meet the parking policies and all the other policies if they were to proceed on this basis. And we had indicated we would be recommending a 5% increase beyond the gross ground floor area as an interim use prior to redevelopment, subject to a number of criteria, and the criteria would indicate that they would not preclude the long-term redevelopment of the site, because the intent, of course, is not to allow such a large-scale redevelopment or interim development that it precludes the redevelopment in the future, doesn't compromise the street network or the pedestrian use connections, does not include a residential use or underground structures, because we saw those as being substantive investments, and that we would review this policy in five years to see whether our development interests are moving toward redevelopment, or whether they're still reticent to move forward. So that was briefly presented last time as well. And are there any discussion points you want to entertain?
Counselor Spanga?
Yeah, I had a question on this point, at the last workshop, in terms of whether the 5% could be applied to the second floor of one of those retail classes. How have you addressed that?
I think at the last meeting, we indicated it could.
Okay.
Yep, it could very well.
Is that a restriction to two stories as well?
There is a restriction in the policy for a maximum of two stories. But again, I think we could work around wording to that effect, to make sure that we aren't precluding that option. I think the biggest preclusion would be whether their ground structure's been designed to take the second story.
Right. Okay.
My own thoughts would be, is I'd lean towards a 10% increase as opposed to the 5, and my thinking is that we're a growing community, we're going to have increased needs, but it'll be up to the market to determine as to whether or not the redevelopment process is feasible, you know, full redevelopment of that. And I would think that 10% recognizes the growth that we're undergoing, and also recognizes the current market conditions, and some reluctance for people to get, to invest substantial capital, which is what a redevelopment option would be. I like the restrictions that you have on it, so that it wouldn't preclude us from being redevelopment-ready, and so I'm inclined to support a 10% increase as opposed to a 5%. Regional Counselor?
I guess my, I concur with the mayor, and I guess my question would be, how does that, I'm just starting, how does that come to a decision point? Will you be bringing a series of decisions to us beyond the ones requested at some point, or should we be requesting something? Is there more information needed, or how do we get to?
On this one, Mr. Mayor, I think we've done a fair amount of analysis with our visuals in any event. So we have a pretty good feel of what the implications would be. And then we couple in Counselor Spanga's comment about being a second story. So we, I think we've got enough information from what we've gathered around this table. And I did reach out again to our development community to ask them to provide me with some policy, and they have, but their policy didn't nail it down for the 5% versus 10%. They said things like limited, you know, which were not as tangible. So I think at this point, I think we've got enough information to, you know, refine the document to reflect a 10% flexibility on that, up to 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
In terms of.
Go ahead, Mary.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe what we can do is, let's say at 3 o'clock, take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
Okay? So let's continue on then.
The underground hydro policy has changed a little as well, and when we met with the region, they indicated that the mechanism that we put in the draft secondary plan was that the region would have to amend its official plan to allow for the widening of Young Street and Davis Drive to accommodate underground hydro. But they were also the view that it didn't have to go that route, that the town could very well have a parallel right-of-way adjacent to their right-of-way to accommodate the underground hydro. So we redrafted the policies to indicate that up to five meters of boulevard will be required to be dedicated to the town with future development or redevelopment, to be able to accommodate in the future the undergrounding of hydro. And the final width of that would be determined at the time of the application, because in some cases, if it's only the conduit that's running along at that location, such as, for example, at Sleser, where we've determined that perhaps it could only be the conduit at that location, that we'd only require three meters. But where you do need to accommodate the trench, or the vault, rather, pardon me, Mr. Mayor, the manhole vault, you do need up to five meters. And so we drafted it to be a bit flexible in that regard.
I want to, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we take maybe a 10-minute break now and give you a chance to gather your voice back? Okay? So let's reset until about 3:05?
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we take maybe a 10-minute break now and give you, give you a chance to gather your voice back, okay? So let's reset until about 3:05.
Where the water?
True.
...
And it sounds to me that the first option, the municipality doing it with an adjacent right-of-way, sounded to me like the, the simplest option. But my concern is that I, I remember, uh, back in two thousand and, prior to two thousand and ten, the culminator around there, I'm not even, I'm, I'm not very familiar with regional issues. But there was an extensive lawsuit or litigation with, uh, Caligari properties across from the regional center on Young Street. Uh, litigation with Mr. Caligari or that group, um, um, with the region because of, um, the region, uh, potentially needing an additional right-of-way or additional six meters or three meters, wherever it was. My concern is that, um, if we get into a battle, and it might not be a concern at all, so I need some clarification, with some of these property owners along that Young Street corridor, that I would much rather see the region get into that battle because they've got much bigger guns than me do, rather than us. Um, is that something I should be concerned or not?
Marion?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, no, I, I think you should be concerned, but I think there's an answer. We're proposing policy in the official plan to require the dedication of the land. Once it's in our official plan, it is the policy. Now, that policy may very well get appealed. But once it's in the, and, and then we'd have to deal with that appeal if there is one. But once it's in our official plan, that becomes the policy. And then we simply implement the policy as applications come forward. So, landowners should be aware that we have this policy that says we're, we're gonna ask for three to five meters. We're gonna ask you to dedicate it to us at the time of development or redevelopment. And if you didn't appeal it when we developed the policy, you don't have a right to appeal it now. We'll have to talk about whether it's three or five meters, depending on where that application is in the corridor, as to whether we need the vault. The vault takes up more space, the manhole vault takes up more space than the conduits. So it would become more of a, a, a negotiation conversation around whether we need the three to five meters once it's in our official plan.
So Marion, why would we wanna do it, not let the region deal with that headache?
Well, I think the region has indicated fairly clearly to us as planners that they would prefer that the town look after that. They see it as something that would probably...
Ha! Well, it's a municipally-owned utility as well.
Yeah.
And it, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I, I hadn't quite gone that way, but that's another point.
It is a regional role.
But they, they've done it in other situations, Mr. Mayor, and they were content to recommend that, this approach with us.
I would like to, I would like to, um, to learn a little bit more about this. And I'm not sure, are you going to, to come back and give us, um, I, I, I can tell you that, that I would, I'm, I'm glad that the Caligari lawsuit was with the region litigation and not with the town of Newmarket. Because it would pale in comparison to what they're going through, what we are going through with Glenway. We went through with Sleser Square. So I just, um, I would like to get a, a better understanding of what the potential risks would be there. Especially because some of those lands are, are, um, held by, uh, some very large property groups, um, that wouldn't have an issue, uh, litigating. So, uh, at what point would I be able to get that clarification? Or should I ask for a report in terms of what the risks, uh, risk assessment of, of, if there are, if there is a risk for litigation going down that road?
We would work with legal services to, to get a handle on that as well.
I think the committee...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, we can do that. We would, uh, deal with the, uh, legal services also. But I think council should be aware that the region is not interested in, in, in pursuing a policy in their own official plan. So that really isn't, if you're looking at it from a point of view of whether or not we should take that battle on, as opposed to not do that, that's a good question. But the region, of course, will be making this decision in context that they'd be dealing with it all across Highway Seven and all the way up Young Street. And they, they, uh, that's, uh, too, uh, problematic for them for a municipal utility. So if the report is about our role in taking it on, uh, that's something we can do.
But doesn't, through you again, Mr. Mayor. Um, but doesn't the region have an interest in seeing that underground implemented? At the end of the day, they're the ones who are driving that, uh, to a certain extent, uh, through the province, I guess. They're driving that higher order of development and intensification and that urbanization of services around those corridors. So isn't it in their interest to see those wires buried? Or would they rather us proceed in the future with, with, uh, a whole bunch of poles still on Young Street? Cause that would be the other solution, no?
That's, I think that's, and I'm, forgive me, Marion.
Go ahead.
They are, that is, you know, to some degree a valid argument. However, the hydro systems are not the same across the region. Uh, ours is a forty-four KV and most of them are thirteen. And, uh, underground hydro is a much different issue when you're dealing with a thirteen KV system. So, um, our requirements are significantly different than, uh, the rest of the region.
I would, uh, like to get, um, that assessment because hanging wires, I think, to me, would be, uh, keeping hanging wires would make a lot more sense than facing, you know, a couple of hundred or, you know, fifty million dollar lawsuits down the corridor. You know, and not having any support from any other, um, level of government, um, or the region. So, um, I'm just not sure if this is something we want to take on on our own.
I don't think that it necessarily is going to be resolved by, we can't assume it's gonna be litigated because there are some items here, like we permit zero setbacks, reduce parkland dedication. There are, there are incentives, I think, that would go with that. So, uh, it, we, we can't necessarily assume the only way that it'll happen is through litigation. And probably the first signal we will have is as to whether or not there's an objection under the, uh, the policy. So, so, uh, we could let that play out, uh, and see where, see where that lands.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, because I think what we are trying to do is to make it as palatable to everybody. Particularly the developers. They, they get the land area that, that, uh, third bullet down. When they dedicate the land as part of the underground, for, for undergrounding hydro, we're prepared to, uh, include that land area in the calculation for FSI. That's, that's a big give for them because they, that's their base for starting to calculate their, their, their FSI. We also indicate that, um, we may be interested in providing some reduced parkland dedication in accordance with our parkland dedication bylaw. So that if they dedicate that land to the town, we can reduce their parkland dedication by a amount, an amount. And I haven't, I'm not recommending the amount today, but that's another give. So, um, and I did some calculations for Sleser, for example, based on five percent for the twenty, was it two hundred, one hundred and twenty-two meters across the frontage of the Sleser property. And they are, they dedicate the three meters. That's equivalent on, at the five percent parkland dedication. That's equivalent to forty-one percent of their parkland dedication. Now, if we have a different parkland dedication under the alternative parkland dedication bylaw, and I've done a little bit of math around that, and it works out, if, if our parkland dedication bylaw, and I'm not saying this is where it'll land, is one hectare per three hundred units, it works out to be something in the order of three percent. The amount that, uh, Sleser would have to dedicate. So what I'm trying to do is try to work out ways to make it work for us, work for the developers, that we can all be in this, kinda in a win-win. And, and, you know, it, it's a tough hole to roll because it is something that's not gonna happen soon. It'll happen sometime in the future, um, if at all. But you have to put the bits and pieces of that puzzle in place in order for even to happen eventually.
I will sit down with you outside of, uh, after committee of the whole, whenever some time to, to discuss this with you. My concern is, yes, I understand the parkland dedication and so forth, but when you have, when you're restricted in terms of the land you have available for redevelopment, i.e. the lands, uh, south of Millard on Young, that corner, that's a very narrow strip of land. Somebody comes and takes away another three meters, um, you're not left with a lot of land to develop. So that's my concern. But I'll, I'll, I'll sit down with you and my understanding is we're gonna get something from legal eventually, part of the report, uh, or not.
Perhaps if we could wait and see the results of the discussion with the planning department.
I'll, we'll sit down.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilor Mucho.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, on that note, I do recall we, we had, um, a workshop and I recall that we, we discussed this policy extensively. I do recall that conversation. I'm not so sure if the council was present. But my impression, and I have to agree with, I think this is a great policy. I think this is, uh, policy that I want to see in, in this report, in this, um, policy, in this, uh, in this, uh, policy. Because I know that my impression, and I know you had this conversation with at least one developer, and we're talking about Sleser, that my impression was they were not concerned or, or they, they didn't, they, they didn't feel that it was that this policy was going to be a problem. So I think we're jumping the gun a bit by saying that we're gonna go through litigation. I don't, I don't see that. And also, Marion, I know you and I exchanged emails back and forth in the past about hydro and the costs, not fifty million, um, you know, less than half of that to, to do some of the underground work. So, um, I, I just, I think this is a good policy. This is something that I would, um, absolutely want to see. And I think a lot of people in, in the town would wanna see that. That's about the future of the community. I don't think people wanna see wires all over the place. Eventually, we have to have that discussion about getting, you know, burying them, and I think that protects us for that.
Thank you. Okay, Marion, carry on.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna hand it over to, uh, Jason, so my quote doesn't give out again.
So this is one of the, uh, one of the policy versions we've introduced in, in the current iteration of the plan. And this, um, is largely in response, I guess, to some comments made by the, by the mall site, although it could potentially apply in some other areas as well. If you recall, in Schedule Five, we show a proposed new street network. And that street network includes, um, public streets and also identifies, um, some of the more strategic private lanes. The comment, and, and on the mall site, it, it identifies basically a public street network, um, bisecting the mall site as part of its eventual redevelopment. And so the idea was, and it was, it was, it was raised, raised by Upper Canada Mall, was some of those streets may actually remain as private streets, provided they can still, um, serve the public function that is needed for, for traffic circulation. So there are some, there's a, there, the, the plan now contemplates that that could be considered, um, that those private streets, sorry, those, those streets would remain in private hands but serve a public function. One of the, one of the key reasons for that is it gives the developer a little bit more, um, flexibility in terms of what they can do underground. And, and the key one being providing, uh, parking structures underneath those, those streets, um, which you can do if, if it remains private. So that's, um, uh, I guess a refinement to the, to the streets policies introduced in this draft. Um, with affordable housing, um, a couple of changes, um, we spoke about this a little bit at the previous workshop. Here, we're implementing regional policy, which directs the thirty-five percent of units within the regional centers. So, so in, in our case, the Provincial Urban Growth Center, be affordable and twenty-five percent elsewhere. This has been modified a little bit in, in this, in the secondary plan to reflect some region's comments that, um, two additional areas, which would be the Young Mulock area and the Regional Healthcare Center area, we would also apply that thirty-five percent, uh, benchmark instead of the twenty-five percent. The reason for that being that those two areas, even though we aren't calling them key development areas in the secondary plan, they really do, they really do meet the spirit of what the regional official plan calls key development areas. And because they are the higher density nodes within this, within the urban centers. Um, and the regional official plan, if we had called them key development areas, would have, would have required that thirty-five percent target to be met. So we felt, you know, they, 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 as I said, they fit the spirit of what a key development area would be. So we're proposing to apply the thirty-five percent requirement. And now in three locations in the urban centers, uh, the Urban Growth Center, the Young Mulock area, and the, um, and the Regional Healthcare Center, and everywhere else, the twenty-five percent, uh, from the regional appeal would apply.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the next, uh, series of slides are, um, are not so much the substantive issues, but they are issues that we thought we should raise with you. Names of the character areas, and I'm gonna revisit that in a minute because each character area, you may, may recall, Heritage New Market suggests an alternative name. We're also proposing, um, you recall in our original, um, uh, draft, uh, secondary plan, we'd identified two study areas. One was, uh, Prospect to Bayview. And, um, that was, um, ensuring that we were aligning Prospect up to, to join with Bayview with a new set of lights. And that all, that whole area needed an analysis, um, given that we're also looking at the, uh, mobility hub as well as the location of a light at the, uh, entrance to the hospital. So it was a little bit confusing in that area and out of the scope of the study, so we identified that as a study area. We also identified the north, south, east, west network, generally in that whole quadrant of town, as being a little bit troublesome, um, both north and south of, particularly the north of Davis. And, uh, rather than, um, you know, parse those out as two studies, they really should be one study. So we've just combined them into one study. We've also added some new servicing and utility urban design policies. And this came from a comment from Bell, and how to better integrate, um, some of those utilities into some of the streetscape infrastructure. For example, some Bell, um, you know, the green, typical green boxes can actually be embedded in lamp poles. They can also be, you know, we, we put policy in place to embed your, um, some of your utility structures in an existing building or underground parking that provides for access to the outside by the utility company. So you don't have all these boxes lined up along our, our, our streetscape. So to kinda just revisit again, um, the character areas, Heritage New Market indicated they'd like to see more heritage names applied. And to me, this is something that you need to wrestle with as, as council in terms of your vision for, for Newmarket. They talked about Young North being Popular Bank, the Young and Davis, um, intersection area, the Red being Bell's Corner, Young Civic York County Center, Young South is Armagedge Village, and Davis Drive is Huron Way. And then we didn't recommend, uh, the Regional Healthcare's, uh, Centers, uh, change at all. But I think this is something that you as council may wanna have some dialogue around. And I don't know whether you wanna have that dialogue today, Mr. Mayor, or whether you wanna deal with that at a future time.
Okay. I have a regional counselor and Councilor Manuel in the queue. Regional counselor?
Uh, I'll just say, yeah, I, I don't think we'll decide it right here and, uh, we probably do need to, to give some thought to this. I have two, two quick comments, though. In general, I'm hesitant to embrace this approach. I, I don't think the residents will ever embrace it, and I think it'll lead to confusion. I think there's ward systems, there's other, and, and people identify areas of towns by a larger area than, that's just defined in the secondary plan. It kinda goes beyond that scope. This is a certain area, even if you look at, when, when, when you do get to the point of villages or, or names of areas opening up in Toronto and stuff, it's not so tight to corridors often. So I, I think it, it won't fly that well. I think it can be confusing. So I'm a little hesitant. Um, and, but I will add, if, if we do go there, I think having a, a center called the Regional Healthcare Center and another one called York County Center, there's still a lot of people in this town that think of that hospital as York County Hospital. And I think that could lead to confusion. But, uh, in general, I think, uh, I would, I would hesitate on this direction.
Thank you. Councilor Manuel?
Thanks. I, I'm fine if we just refer to, as you've got listed and stuff in the brackets, uh, because frankly, I'll eat my hat if in twenty years, people are referring to these blocks as the, those neighborhoods. I think we can spend a lot of time discussing this and frankly, I don't think it'd be a great use of our time. We could better spend it talking about Queen Street. So, uh, but anyways, I just, uh, I'm fine with just leaving it frankly as it is right there. Stuff in brackets and Young North, cause I don't think anyone will, uh, other than applying documents, refer to those areas.
Thank you. Councilor Twitty?
Sorry, just a question of really how, how are these, what was your vision of how these names were going to be used in the future? Was it just within the planning document or was it to be used in some sort of context of being publicly displayed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly I see them as, as just being titles within the document. Developers may embrace them in some way in the future, but maybe not. You don't know. I mean, they, they wanna brand their own, um, developments the way they, they choose to. So I see them as being part of the document.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We won't talk about it anymore.
All right. Um, okay, then there, um, I'm gonna start the bottom. There is a suggestion from the region that the secondary plan, um, be identified on Schedule G, which is our railhead protection, schedule in our parent official plan, and that's, that's not a problem. So we're, we've identified that as a change to, uh, the parent official plan. But we have identified a number of other, uh, changes to the, uh, the mapping, and I'm gonna quickly go through those. One is the Hollings, the addition of the Hollingsworth Arena to the, uh, secondary plan area. This provides a little more depth, um, at a location where it is very tight on Davis Drive, uh, again, in the hospital area. And again, dealing with a little more opportunity for flexibility at that location. Another is, um, the, um, area between Davis Drive and Walter Avenue. With the Viva Next, um, taking a fair amount off that frontage along Davis Drive, there's very little depth remaining. And, um, there's also a grade separation between, um, the flattish area on Davis Drive and drops to the back, uh, the back of those homes that, um, front on Walter. So this is an opportunity to provide a little more development, uh, adjacent to a transit corridor, um, redevelopment opportunity, with a bit more depth to the frontage on Davis Drive.
Okay. Councilor Twitty? Oh, sorry.
One more?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Simcoe, um, well, I, I refer to it as the Simcoe Street property. It's completely within the floodplain. And we've identified this as, as another area that could be, um, uh, changed to part of the park system. It, it has some, has very limited development opportunities. And, uh, we're seeing it as the open space, uh, component in the, in the secondary plan. So those, those are the main changes, uh, the main changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Twitty, then Regional Counselor?
I'm adding the Hollingsworth Arena to the secondary plan, um, taken up to Irwin Crescent. And with that, are we looking at that twenty-two degree angle at that point there? Or are we still looking at forty-five degrees there? Cause that's, I would have a huge concern. That's a residential street right, you know, homes that are right across from there. Um, and I know, you know, we've had, um, actually, I mean, it was public. We had the, um, that developer come forward with, uh, with his concept and ideas. And I know we're supposed to be getting back a report on the Hollingsworth Arena and all, or the bigger picture of, uh, displacing that arena and what effect it's gonna have. So there's so many other, you know, elements that go into that. And I wouldn't wanna just, you know, I don't know, right now, it's what, three to ten stories? Is that what you're contemplating if, if you were to do it? And so my question would be, are we looking at, looking at the twenty-two degree angle? I think ten stories right across from that residential area like that is way, it's just...
Yeah. And what we've also included in there, Mr. Mayor, is a park. If you turn to, uh, if you have the opportunity to go through our, our revised draft, I've identified a park that parallels Irwin. Is it, oh, yeah, Irwin?
Yeah.
And, and then we have our, our green streetscape that comes down, um, Patterson. So we would be looking at an interim park use adjacent to Irwin in addition to, uh, the twenty-two, uh, uh, degree angular plain.
Okay.
Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks. Uh, first on that one, just, I, I, that was being suggested, but I, I think the possibility of, I know it's tricky, but you could possibly split that a little bit so that the back is two to six or something, or a little, I think right now, unless I'm reading it wrong, is the entire piece other than the green strip is, uh, three to ten. Is that correct? Yeah. So is that development block big enough that you could s- uh, split like you have on some with the front being three to ten and the back half being two to six or something to that effect?
We could.
Just something to look at, I think, and to consider. Um, the other one that I, um, I didn't catch, and thank you for raising it, uh, this, the Walter Avenue block. That's a, that's a fairly significant change. I see where you're going with it, but I guess, uh, to, to be consistent with the concern I raised earlier, and I think in the, in the report where you're, the, the motion asks you to look at it in other circumstances, I think this is one where you need to look at it again. You, this is very much this case where on one side of Walter, you could be, and wow, and certainly with no, not even for the first ten or fifteen months the secondary plan process, would you have thought this could happen to you? You could be wa, you could be looking straight across a six-story building. At least there was a homes there to buffer you before. And I know those homes would have been on the back of something larger. But, you know, there is an issue about what you would have thought to expect and where this is coming in the process. And so I, I would think we'd wanna think somehow about what we, what's realistic there. And I know that's not a very deep development block, and I, and I appreciate what you're trying to do is make something achievable there with the, by adding, I just think it needs some, some thought in that report to that interface with the, uh, with the residents on the other side of Walter, which will probably never redevelop and will...
Yeah. And through you, Mr. Mayor, we did think a little bit about that, um, and I think it needs a dedicated cross-section to look carefully. The twenty-two, um, degree angular plain would apply there because you have residential on the other side.
To what effect, I guess, until you run one of those?
Yeah, you have to do, yeah. And then, of course, you've got the grade separation. Walter's here, the property's up here, and Davis is here. So you've already got a pretty, so this, what it, what it provides is direct access to underground parking. I, what I picture there is a nice, quiet townhouse block with maybe live work on the frontage on Davis. So that you, you don't have entrances coming off Davis, um, at all through that frontage. But you would be driving around, parking your car underneath at the back for potentially, you know...
So the redevelopment site will also, now, now those residents on Walter won't only be looking at possibly six-story buildings, but the traffic that accesses all those buildings will be driven off of Walter, which is currently residential. I, that's a pretty big cha, I guess, I think, in your, in your idea of maybe mixed-use townhouses, that might be a right fit. But then it wouldn't require six story, I, I just think we need to give that spot a little more thought.
And, and that, just to, to respond to, everywhere we have two to six, doesn't mean six is gonna happen?
No, I know, but I'm, we've been, we've been, uh...
It's a document.
We've been at the O M V. I'd just like to know about you. I'd rather, I, but if we don't contemplate it, let's not provide it. And they can always ask for, you know, an amendment if it's necessary. That's, that is a bit of a tricky spot. And it is late in the secondary plan and process, and I doubt that people on the other side of Walter, have, have, have they been notified that this has changed?
No, they will have to be, though.
I would think so.
All these properties that we're identifying that are specific will have to be, um, not only the property owners identify, but also property owners within one hundred and twenty meters will have to be notified.
I, I see what you're trying to do there, and I don't entirely disagree with what you're trying to do. I just think we need to give more thought to how to do it. So, thanks.
Councilor Hampton?
Thanks. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for your presentation. Taking into consideration, talking about the Walter Street property also, uh, taking into consideration the angular plain, I'll be speaking with you and hopefully you can get some information on what you feel will be a maximum height. So when those questions come forward... So, when those questions come forward to me, I can speak with the residents. So, we can sit down sometime.
Okay.
Thank you. Carry on.
I'll speak to a couple of the editorial changes that have been added as well. The overall people and jobs numbers by character area have been modified a little bit, and the table is included in the, in the presentation. This primarily reflects just some addition errors that were in the previous version. So, those are reflected in the, in the updated table. The parent OP in the, in the previous version, we, the parent OP had included population and jobs numbers for the town to 2031 as well as that build-out. The region had commented that they did not want to see the 2031 numbers in there. There's a process for arriving at new 2031 numbers for the town that requires the, the region to conform to provincial policy and then to allocate that population down to the lower tiers. So, in response to that, the, the secondary plan, or sorry, the, the modification, the parent OP to include new 2031 numbers has been removed. The secondary plan just speaks to an ultimate build-out number without a specific year tied to that. There's a number of sustainability policies contained within the urban design section. Those have been modified a little bit in response to some comments from the region as well as from NEAC. One of those was around the inclusion of townhomes and stacked townhomes with some of those requirements, including the policies that encourage measures to reduce energy use to encourage water conservation. Previously, those policies had been limited only to mid-rise and high-rise forms. Those policies are now encouraged also for the, for the towns and the stacked towns. And also in the urban design section, some additional policies related to communication technology and making sure that new development is designed to be able to accommodate communication technology.
Regional councillor.
Thanks. On the, the updated people and jobs section, which I think you're gonna slide, slide next one on, the, I guess, I just some questions there, a few things. First of all, do we, how many units do we add per year to new market typically? Is it 500? Or four, no, 400?
Six hundred.
Four to 500? Four to 500? Okay, so I'm in the range? And that's, that's roughly, okay, so I guess what I'm wondering, a few things. One thing we seem to have tried to get in and have lost even as a reference point, a footnote, I've asked enough times to get a footnote out of it, is what about the population for the rest of the town and what does it all mean combined? I mean, that's what people want to know, frankly, and we're, if we want to provide people information, they're trying to get a sense of what does this mean about the size of the town? And we're not even dealing with 2031 numbers now, we're dealing with the build-out, which I believe we, is that generally referred to as 2051, even though build-out is hypothetical?
Yep.
So, I would, I would find it very useful to just have that as even a footnote, so we have some reference point about the growth we expect elsewhere in town with this, to try to get a sense of. And then if it's possible, I'd really like to try to understand the growth. If we're doing five, 400, 500 units, that's, you know, 12, 1600 people per year, right, if I'm doing the math right, this is suggesting 830, 40, 50 per year if you go right to build-out on these numbers of 31,000. So, does that, does that mesh with what we're expecting in the rest of the town? And does that mean we're seeing a decrease or an increase from traditional levels? I think of around 2% of population growth per year in terms of trying to think about sustainability one way or another. Is it too much because of plan for infrastructure? Is it too little from an economic development perspective? So, I'd like to try to understand the numbers a little more, if we could get some, some help with that eventually. So, I think you've provided slides, for example, before about the historical growth around the 2%, and you go back and it was at one time as high as 10 and 15, and, but what is our trend line recently? What are our number of units coming online for the last number of years? What does this represent and what is not, what's not included in the secondary plan represent, and how does that look going out?
Yep. And, and Mr. Chair, remember the last time we presented the draft secondary plan, I did have a, a report to that effect that talked about what the existing trend lines are, and they did vary a lot depending on the economy. But we saw this as actually being a little more quiet than the past, and we certainly have the figures around what is pending development now in terms of the applications that we have on, on our books right now relative to how it fits with this. And they're, they're almost at a par, if I remember correctly, but we'll make sure we have that information.
Memo sent around, but it's fine with me. I guess I'm just assuming, though, that we're anticipating quote, somewhere between 500 and 700 units, sorry, 500, 700 people in the rest of town to give you that number that keeps you at 2%. And I'm really guessing a number, so if we could get some, something sent that kind of lays that...
Yeah. In fact, I did have those sheets that I printed off some time ago, and I forgot to bring them in with me, and I would have been able to help you with that, but...
And last question, the jobs, that represents a one-to-one ratio, which we're required to have for, through regional and provincial policy and only in the, in the designated growth center or through the whole corridor, or?
The regional plan requires it for the regional center.
The regional center only, but we're extrapolating it beyond that, correct?
Yes. We're, we're aiming to apply it within our, within the entire urban center. So, we have a balance.
And I guess, I think it's a, it's obviously a laudable goal, but I was sometimes worried about setting expectations that I, sound like a neg, you know, somebody who's being a pessimist here, but I just think 32,000 jobs in this, in that area is just, ah, it would be so hard to achieve. I don't want to say impossible, but so hard. So, I guess, you know, I don't, I don't know. I guess I'll leave it there. I don't, whether, whether it's good to have a goal that's, you know, is utopia but maybe not achievable, or should you have something maybe that says one-to-one in the area that you must, and then 0.75 after that to ones that might be more realistic? I guess it's a question I leave out there.
As a matter of scaling. Good. Thank you. Councillor Emmanuel?
I was gonna say, yeah, through, Mr. Mayor, the, I think you're right, it's, it's a one-to-one over a large area is a tough one to achieve, but I think what's unique about this area is there's a, there's such a large proportion envisaged for retail and commercial, that that's what's gonna carry a fair bit of that job number. We are dealing with a, with a corridor area, so you don't have a lot of those internal blocks, which would be very difficult to bring any sort of employment use into. So, I think part of it is reflecting the fact that there's a couple of key employment, like office employment type nodes, and, and the others that maintain this area as a major commercial area within the town. So, that's what's, it's the ground floor retail that's generating a lot of the job numbers.
Last question, sorry, and I can recall, and I should recall, but is this in, in addition to what's already there, or is this inclusive of what's already there?
This is, it's in addition, I mean, largely what's already there would be replaced by this, as opposed to just sort of accommodating, but yeah...
I think it's a regional...
This is the total. This is, this is the new total.
Oh, the new total? Or this is in addition to what already exists?
That would already exist would be captured within that. So, this is building out each of the blocks.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And to put it in perspective, we have something like 2,000 residents currently within our urban centers, which is really not very much. So, we, we're really quite skewed to the employment side.
What's the rough number there?
The employment?
1700 people and...
We're forgetting our, yeah, we're forgetting our earlier stats now. I apologize, you know. I always remember the residents, but I never remember the...
It's about 70,000.
I think it's more like 70,000.
Okay.
Well, we can bring that at the end.
Thank you. Councillor Emmanuel?
Similar line of question to the, the jobs. Can you, which is the area that the regional plan requires us to be one-to-one? What?
So, within the...
Just the...
What they would call the regional center, which, which we've defined as the urban growth center.
Right.
So, approximately there.
So, I have the same concern. I'd be shocked, too, if we can achieve, I think in that area, it's a, it's a laudable goal, but beyond that, I'd be shocked if we achieved 32,000 jobs. So, I wonder, that will be addressed then, whether there'd be consideration to having a less than a one-to-one ratio in the area beyond that, that border? Will that be addressed in the report that we're gonna get? Through you.
If you can talk about it in that report.
I just, I think it's, I, I just want to have numbers that are achievable, too, and I'd be surprised, but nonetheless. The, the next question I had, the regional councillor spoke briefly, but we've kind of seen historically 2% growth. And my concern is kind of twofold. One, I think, as we approve this and as our current sort of allotment of land that's developing in traditional residential subdivisions, et cetera, as that kind of fills up, and we know that's coming to completion, that we might see a few years of stagnation before the market is there for condo development. And so, we might see, my first concern is that we might see a few years of below 2% and what that does to our fiscal situation with respect to our municipal budgets, how reliant we are on DCs, et cetera. But then beyond that, when the market is eventually there, how successful it will be, and whether we might see growth rates because, you know, of 3, 4, 5%. I don't know what the number might be. I don't know what's, out of line, I don't know what, say, communities like Vaughan's gonna see around the subway, et cetera, but obviously that would be more. My concern would be, is it, does it get to a point where beyond that, those years of stagnation, where it's almost too much? And is, what are your thoughts, and if you don't want to address them today, maybe through a memo or a report, about capping the percentage of growth at whatever number, just spitball, say 4% or, so that we're not overwhelmed and not everything's coming on all at once and dealing with it, growth as a cap on percentage during that time period? I'd appreciate your comments on that.
Karen?
I'll take a stab at it. I think you're right. You, you've got a lot of development right now that, that is probably gonna move fairly quickly, because a lot of it is, is still ground-related. But as we move forward, there, there probably will be a slowdown, and then, and then because the development's coming on, for example, condominium development may have 400 units as an example, and if you get two in a year that actually builds out, you may have little spikes, not unlike you've had in the past. So, I, I don't see it as being that dissimilar to your past. Some municipalities, I mean, we also have, in terms of controlling growth, we also have our allocation policy. So, we, we are in control of how we meter out our development. So, we can control that. If we feel that things are moving too quickly and our infrastructure's not keeping pace, whether it's the, you know, sewage allocation or whether it's some other forms of infrastructure, we as, as a municipality have the ability to control that at that time. Now, whether we put in the plan today, you know, that you want to have a maximum percentage growth on an annual basis, I'm not, I'm not sure you want to do that today. I think that might be something you want to maybe look at, you know, four, five, six, eight, 10 years from now, when you see how things are happening.
And I appreciate the, because you raised allocation. Everything I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that allocation down the road really becomes a non-issue. You know, the five-year, six-year, that's always been a great tool for us to control growth. I mean, our growth, too, my colleagues probably know better, but in, throughout the region, is probably relatively low compared to some of our, some other municipalities, 2% like compared to Vaughan, Richmond Hill, Arkham. So, that's always been a great tool, allocation. I guess my fear is, but it's not necessarily gonna be addressed in the, this is more a broader question, I think, that this council and the staff have to wrestle with, is, right now, DC-wise, what do, what do we generate annually through DCs, through you to have the commissioner or CIO, roughly? Is it 5 million? 4? Yeah. It's in the multi-millions. So, you know, that, those years where there's going to be sort of stagnation, because, I mean, at some point, someone's gonna break ground and start moving and test the market, right? I mean, that's what's gonna happen, and hopefully it's, you know, whether it's gonna be Millard, I don't say hopefully, but maybe it's gonna be Young and Millard or what, I don't know. But I suspect we're years, quite a few years away before we start seeing significant condo development, which is fine. But I worry about our financial situation in that, in that those years, stagnation years, where we've used up all our inventory of lands for residential. And so, I wonder if there's ways, because we won't have allocation at our discretion going forward, whether that's something we can explore. And maybe it's at a five-year review point that we look at capping the percentage. But it's just something I've been struggling with, and how we're gonna grow and how, how quickly it's gonna happen and how we're gonna manage that. Because that's what this document is really setting the framework for, how we're gonna manage that growth. And, you know, you just want, don't want it to be too aggressive either, say in 15, 20 years, if we start getting inundated with applications. That is all gonna come online at the same time, and it could be quite costly. Anyways, those are just some comments.
Thank you. Councillor Hampin?
Thank you. I'm gonna speak in broad terms in, in land use and people and jobs and the overall presentation again. Thank you for the presentation. I know this, coming to this point has probably been a couple of years and many different iterations, and looking at and listening to the public and how they want to see our town grow, and, and listening to this council on how we want to see this town grow. I guess when I'm looking at this and, and thinking about the rapid transit that's being put in along Davis Drive and along Young Street, it is important, and then this major financial commitment that the province has made, and actually the taxpayers of this town have made, to, to establish this. And looking at this growth and in this document we have in front of us, I wonder how long before we see this growth happening along Young Street. We know that Young Street is gonna be reconstructed for the rapid transit in 2015 and probably take four or five years, which takes us somewhere around 2020. And I'm wondering about, you know, the likelihood of this, this type of development happening and going back to the points of councillor Emmanuel, and, and having concerns about not seeing the revenue that we're accustomed to offset our, our tax base. This is important for the residents of this community, and I believe that we do need to manage growth, but at the same time, encourage growth to meet our financial responsibilities and, and our requirements. And a question, now, we're, we're dealing with this and getting back to the point of dealing with this document again, and, and looking at these plans that we're, we have, I think we're a number of years away before we see any real significant height and density within this community. I personally think we're 10 years away, we're 15 years away. I'd like to see growth happen sooner to meet our financial obligations. I'm not talking about growth that is not within what this council wants to see and not what the public wants to see. But when will this process take place again? When will the next council be looking at a document, creating a document like this again? Is that five years? Is that seven years? When is that? That's a question. I'll make some more comments.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Secondary plans like your official plan is up for review every five years under the Planning Act. Now, whether you do a comprehensive review or whether you just say, stay the course, you know, or something in between, that's really up to, to council and, and what's been happening in the town in that ensuing five years. So, you do, you get to revisit it every five years.
Every five years. So, you know, this is a, I was so excited when I came on council and I saw that we were gonna be undertaking the secondary plan and really making the plans for our community for the future. And I thought, that's an exciting thing and that's a great thing, and when we're gonna see that development is, is another question, I guess. I, I want to go back to the part where we had the options of consideration for the bonusing. And, and it's my hope that we take the maximum heights, or the proposed heights, I think it's 17 to 20 stories with three bonusing. I'm hoping that we can reduce those numbers as well and get as much value for this community if somebody wants to put up an additional five stories from 15 stories that this municipality benefits somehow. So, I'm hoping that that could maybe be considered and looked at. Also, I, during the break, I had the opportunity, a resident came down from the audience and, and spoke to me, and he's really been a proponent of dealing with the traffic on the Young Street corridor. And I hear it all the time from the residents of not only my ward, but of the town. He feels there's a real disconnection on our, our transit system, our transit system that goes from basically Davis Drive to Savage Road, and he wants some real consideration, and so do I, some real consideration made to, before we allow development, what is our plan? How are we gonna be dealing with this traffic? The people who are living in our community right now are having... this traffic? The people who are living in our community right now are having a long commute within our community after commuting back home. And I'd like to see something that's going to be dealing with those issues and addressing those issues. Because what we have right now is, is of concern. So those are my comments.
I wonder, Mr. Prentice, I know that the region or Mr. Nethery, the region's going through their transportation master plan, we're contributing to that. And I want to emphasize how important it is for us to have an understanding as to what the growth and the population is. Because going through your official plan is actually what feeds into, what do we need for infrastructure to service that? And I think VIVAX is probably a good example, knowing that we're having that intensification. And this is the first time that I've ever seen that the transportation solutions in a large measure are in front of the construction, in front of the developments and the apartment buildings. So I think this in a large measure will feed the transportation master plan the region's looking at. But if you could expand on that, either Mr. Nethery or Mr. Prentice, as to where that stands as far as the transportation master plan is. Mr. Nethery?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not exactly sure where they're at currently. I know that they've been receiving information from us in terms of the work that we've been doing. And so it will all sort of tie together. Remember though, that it was not just a matter of, you know, simply adding lanes, we're beyond that, we can't do that anymore. So the solutions that are being discovered and envisioned in this document certainly heavily rely on the VIVA system. But also think about the opportunity for the grid of streets that take some, that bleed off some of that traffic. But it's also about traffic demand management and changing attitudes and that sort of thing. And it won't happen overnight. And it's not going to be, it might not be any of us, it might be our kids that are actually doing that, that are living a lifestyle in a little bit different way. So I heard a great quote today that was attributed to the former director of Vancouver and it's, if you're not stuck in traffic, you are traffic. So you're part of the problem. So what you actually have to do is come up with mechanisms that take you out of that. So that if there's a way to live and work in a manner that I don't need to rely on my car all the time, or that I can walk, or that I can telecommunicate, or those other sorts of things. I think those are the kinds of things that are being envisioned by not just this secondary plan, but all sort of current planning documents that are thinking about moving away from sprawl and being less reliant on a car. So I think that's sort of where we're heading. And it certainly won't happen overnight. But more importantly, those of us that are still driving in a car, I mean, we will continue to do so, but we will find ourselves at some point in the, hopefully not too distant future, where we've got a range of options that mean that that's not the only thing that we have to do. Marion may have some more information specifically about the timing of that regional work in terms of when that's coming forward?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, in terms of a date. I know that they've been, as Rick indicated, they have been working toward it. And certainly, our secondary plan will be an important component of what they consider. And also the transportation work that we've been doing with GHD. I know we haven't, we've been a bit quiet on that front, but their Phase Two report should be out shortly and inform even more of the revised draft secondary plan. So we've been working closely with them in the preparation of not only the draft, but also the revised draft.
And I'm also aware there's direct discussions going on with the region regarding Young Street, Davis Drive to Green Lane. And so we'll be hearing some more information on that. That's, I think, a critical pinch point for us as well. Not necessarily as easy a solution as we might ask for, but it does in part, I guess, address some progress. Counselor DiMuccio?
And that actually is a great segue because I want to, what I have to say, which is just a comment. And I know, Marion, that you are very limited on some of these things because, you know, you're getting direction from the region. So there are some limitations. But I wanted to talk about specifically what we were originally talking about, about the people and the jobs. And I guess this really comes back to, I understand how the region, you know, we have to have these statistics, you know, transportation use, jobs, all those things, because those things help provide a municipality with a direction and a future of what something is going to look at. But I guess, my concern is that when we base, and this is, you know, this is all government, when we start to base things on theory, those theories have an implication with our development. And that's why we're here today, we're talking about a secondary plan. And those, these theories, which I personally think are sometimes out of left field, and I'm not sure where we're coming with these numbers, they have an implication on how we are planning our, what our future looks like in the infrastructure. And we see that even with the region. You know, they've invested billions of dollars in infrastructure in the past. And we're in a position right now today where that's a very heavy duty debt that we have on the shoulders of us and our kids. And, you know, I know that the region has even had to address some of these things. They've raised development fees across the board, I think 30%. So those all have implications. You know, when you raise things like development fees and, you know, the cost of affordable housing goes up, which is what, $416,000? I mean, I'm just, those are just my comments. And that's why I'm very, you know, I'm wary about doing these kinds of things based on theories. It has a direct implication on our future. And I, I just, I'm not sure how we would even address that because a lot of this stuff is out of my own control and where I sit today. So those are my comments. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Counselor Hampton?
Yeah, thank you. I, I don't want to keep on harping on this, but I think it's really important. And again, that maybe something get provided to council and circulated to council. You know, we hear that we're going to have a generational change and that generational change maybe isn't going to drive the car anymore. We live in Newmarket. My son lives downtown, he's started living downtown, we had a conversation and I talked to him about driving a car and he doesn't, he has a car that he, a used car that he has, an older car. And he leaves it at home and he doesn't need it when he's in Toronto. But I said, could you see yourself living in Newmarket one day and not having your car? And we don't really have that transportation network yet in place. And if that's a solution, and I hear that's a solution in the future, I'd like to know what that looks like. I want to know what's coming down the line. I want to know, you know, I'd like to hear the train system, are we going to enhance train service? When is that? What's that time horizon? Are we going to see a greater connection of a transit system that doesn't just end at Savage Road? And I'm sorry to keep on going back to this point, but when I get asked these questions and people want to know how we're going to deal with the growth and the traffic, I want to have some answers and I want to be able to say, look, here's how, here's the plan. Here's the plan in 10 years and 20 years. So what we have coming down the line would be helpful.
Could be some benefit in having some discussions, have the region make a presentation at a CIP for the community if some of those things are underway and also Metrolinks and Go as well. So, yeah, the more information that we have, I think, the easier it is for us to land on a spot. Now, one of the things that I'm very mindful of is that our current official plan is projecting our growth to about 98,000. I think it's 98,000. And when we gave that consideration, when it was important for us to invest in recreational facilities, we looked at the Magna Center and we said, what we're building here is something that will accommodate the needs of a population of 98,000 people. And we took that same strategy going forward when we made a consideration for the operations center, when we consolidated the operations centers. We've made some fairly significant investments that talk about a 98,000 people population. And so there's still another 13,000 that it's likely to come in through ground-related development. But this is a population that's going to help contribute towards the capital investments that we've made in the past and should be able to provide some financial support on a go-forward basis. So I'm interested in seeing where after this official plan is the gap. So if we look, or after the secondary plan, if we look at what does Newmarket look like to full buildout, it's going to be beyond 98,000. And we're going to need those numbers to say, these are the additional things that we're going to need and we'll need to plan for that now as we're getting there to be able to afford that kind of service level or facilities as we go forward. So I think what we're doing here is very important. I'd like to see the population forecast based on the scenarios that we've looked at. I think that would be helpful, not just along the centers and corridors, but also the ground-related. And I think the ground-related will fill out earlier than we see the impact of the corridors. So if we could see that graphing and take a look at what do we need to consider as far as the financial implications and how are we going to plan for the sustainability piece? I think that's important for us as well. So I think we're at the beginning of a very long journey. And that is, is first looking at the community, what it will look like, what we think is sustainable, and how we're going to respond and plan to accommodate that growth. So it's an important document. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that because I think that encapsulates what I'm hoping to bring forward in terms of that in response to Counselor Taylor as well, where you've been, what we see happening over the next period of time, just with development that are pending as well as into the future. And we'll try to get a handle on some of the other possibilities out there as well.
Thank you. And looking, coming back to Counselor Emanuel's question in terms of financial, financial capacity, we are going through a review of development charges now as well. So I think this will feed into what we're going to need as far as facilities and capital go. And that'll also inform our development charge review as well. So that's, I think, an important part of this document. Regional Counselor?
Thanks. A few things, I know we're getting to the end, but I did want to raise some other questions. One quick question, when you're calculating Forest Base Index and they give the way it's calculated, but is that, will that be, can that calculation be done after park, if somebody don't contribute, let's say they're not at the FSI they need to be at, but they donate a section of their land to the town, are they then, is it FSI based on the development block pre-parkland dedication or any kind of conveyance? Or can it be considered after?
The conveyance...
It's exclusive, sorry, it's exclusive of parks?
Exclusive?
Yes.
What about exclusive of conveyance? Often, we have that, like, oh, that land's not very usable, we'll give it to the town.
Well, if it's, if it's not usable, for example, if it's floodplain, that floodplain cannot be calculated.
Or any kind of conveyance, in case they literally wanted to convey to get themselves to the minimum.
Let me relook at the policy through that lens, but it, but it, those, that should not be excluded because the FSI has got a prescriptive list of what is excluded. And if it's not being, it's not one of those things, then it would not be excluded. So if you're just conveying it because you don't want it, it shouldn't count. But I'll look at the policy through that lens.
Here it is here. The land area for the purpose of calculating FSI is the land area used for buildings, off-street parking and service areas, private streets and driveways, lands conveyed to the town for underground hydro, remember I mentioned that one earlier, private landscaped areas including private squares that are designed to be used by the public, meaning under their ownership. What shall not be included are public streets, parks and open space that are dedicated to the town, natural heritage areas, so if you have a wetland or a floodplain, actually floodplains are next, floodplains and hazard lands unless the development exists or has been permitted by the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority. So there may be some situations where some limited development may be permitted by the conservation authority. And shall also exclude schools and public infrastructure such as pumping stations.
So FSI doesn't include those things? And one of those things was parkland dedication, I thought I heard you say. So that, okay.
If it's for parkland, yes. Yes, if it's just surplus to their needs and it's not, that's what I'll have to think through as I read that.
Right, okay. And then on page 44, the town may consider an FSI is higher than the maximum FSI for an individual application only where it can be demonstrated the satisfaction of the town that, A, B, C, D. Am I to assume from reading that that A, B, C, D all must apply? That's, sorry, page 44 of mine.
Yes, yes.
All must apply, not one?
Correct, it's an and at the end of C.
Oh, yeah, okay. And B says that maximum FSI for the individual density designation within which the application applies will not be exceeded. But isn't this, I don't get that. That town may consider an FSI that's higher for an individual application and then it says B, we're showing to the town that the maximum FSI for the individual density designation within which the application applies will not be exceeded.
So what you have, if you picture, sort of pick a, grab a dark blue blob on the map, so there'll be multiple parcels within that. So one of the individual parcels, one of the individual applications may be higher than the FSI for the dark blue, as long as the overall average for the dark blue is exceeded.
Okay. Where I got confused is because you used the word individual in both. The B, individual density designation means for the whole blue blob. Is that maybe, okay.
Yes.
I was, so I saw the individual at the top and the bottom and thought you meant like parcel or something. Okay.
I can tell you, we've tried to wordsmith that one to make it clear and it's a tough one. So we'll keep working on it.
All right. Then my last, last thing I do is I do want to make one last motion. And I've referred to it earlier, but I want to make it in the form of a motion. And I'll start it with an example. On page 43, section 4, 6.4.7, number three, I don't know for sure that this is an issue, but it's an example of one where I'd have questions. And it says here, "Development proposals shall not be evaluated based on height and density targets alone, but in combination with all other policies of the secondary plan, including but not limited to the urban design, floodplain and hazard land policies." When I read that at first, I thought, well, "Development proposals should not be evaluated based on height and density targets alone," meaning there could be other considerations, which mean, could mean that height and density doesn't trump everything. But what I really think you mean here is that you've got, you've got to meet the height and density and there's other things you've got to meet. So would that be better phrased, "Development proposals must not only meet with the policies related to height and density, but also related to." And the reason I point that out is because it's the kind of strength in a language that I think needs to be looked at possibly in here that I don't think, and I don't think it's any fault of yourselves because from a planning perspective, you looked at everything. But I think we should have an external legal review of the document from a perspective of language vis a vis OMB challenges. I think it'd be money incredibly well spent, it might cost $5,000 or $10,000, I don't know. But if one of those improvements saves us at the OMB someday, it's going to pay for itself over 100 times. So I, the other, I refer to prefer that, make a motion that staff retain an external legal review of the secondary plan in relation to policy, language and OMB challenges. And I jokingly said, you know, you might want to even get somebody like an Ira Kagan, somebody who's used to challenging secondary plans and official plans for the benefit of the development community. Those kind of eyes that look at and say, boy, if I were, you know, looking for something here, this is what, this language here I might use. And so, anyway, make that a motion.
Any further discussion? Do we have an estimate of what the cost might be?
Okay, well, I don't know when we meet an expert that holds this up a month or if we can make, bring back costs.
Estimates. Mr. Sheldon?
An estimate, I'm just being advised that an estimate could be obtained within short order, you know. Yeah, we could bring it, say, within a week or something like that.
It's coming forward, yeah, it's coming forward to the next CLW as well.
Okay, so I'll revise that to that staff, staff seek out an estimate for such review and bring it back available.
Okay, that's friendly. All right, good. Any further discussion on that? Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So shouldn't that be a report to staff, or a direction to staff first and then come back and have the motion? Because I think that, for me anyways, cost would be very dependent on my decision today. So I'm just, I mean, we're not, are we making a decision based on cost?
As I read the amended motion, Counselor, I think what we're doing is we're requesting an estimate of the costs and then the decision we made on the basis of that cost.
Is that what the motion is then? Okay, then I would support that. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. Okay, let's, any further questions? Next steps, see you.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, we've moved along on this next steps slide to number two today. We, I have prepared a short report for Committee of the Whole for February 24th, which was circulated last Thursday. And basically, the report is... We, I have prepared a short report for Committee of the Whole for February twenty-fourth, which was circulated last Thursday. And basically, the report is recommending that you direct staff to revise the secondary plan and circulate it back out to the public for another round and also another public meeting. Now, February twenty-fourth is also a time where we potentially saw you dealing with a few other motions to give staff direction. Now, we've, we've heard a fair number today, but I don't know whether there will be that opportunity on the twenty-fourth to give us more direction. You know, you may think about it and bring something forward on the twenty-fourth as well. So I think we're pretty much in your hands now in terms of, of these next steps. There is some certainty, certainly around the twenty-fourth, but I think until we have that meeting and get further direction from council, we'll plan to work forward on the remaining steps, but it would be at your direction in terms of timing and so on.
As I understand it, the February twenty-fourth, the report coming forward on February twenty-fourth would have some specific recommendations. I have not had an opportunity to review that yet myself, but we'll see, we'll see that come forward. We'll also be able to deal with, we have dealt with some recommendations and motions today. And so I see the twenty-fourth as rounding that out and setting out the next, the next steps on a go-forward basis. I had a look at our meeting schedule, and I see that we've, we have two COWs in March, April, on April, April seventh and the twenty-eighth. I'm very mindful, and the points been raised by other members of council around the compression getting in front of the summer holidays. So I'd, I'd want to make sure that we, we get the public meeting, first of all, adequate public notice, but get the public meeting in early enough so that we're not making, not making last-minute decisions. And I think that was raised earlier. Regional Counselor?
Thanks. I just wanted to raise one more thing. I'll just leave it out there for now, but I had this discussion with Marion. I'm, I'm still a little concerned about, and I can't pull it up here, the act of transportation networks on-street bike connectivity on an east-west basis through town, what is conceptually called long ago, sort of like some relief from Davis Drive, and the, and the extreme likelihood that Davis Drive isn't used in that fashion. And the, it seems to me that the, where we're picking is quite a bit off of Young, or off of Davis, the route that includes, I think, Shrigley and, is it, I don't know how.
That's the network. These are the priorities.
Right. And the priorities here, what, you see the piece I'm referring to, and we talked about it, right? And it has the, it has the Park Avenue in the middle that's not a priority, A, that would give you that east-west connectivity. So I guess, I guess what I'm asking, is this something that's been long overdue in town, and in the five-year priority, which we know we'll get behind on, we still don't have that, that piece. And I think it's an absolute priority, some east-west connectivity alternative from Davis. And I actually think that closer to Davis is probably a better...
Oh, up in here you're talking.
Well, no, probably the first purple one, but I don't know if you recall, but then you can jog up, and I can't...
This is, this is Millard.
Yeah, then you jog up to...
Yeah.
Not that high, no. Next down.
I think we've actually captured it in this one.
Okay.
We've gone up here, along, Simcoe, Simcoe?
There.
Right here. Then we've jogged down and across here.
But what's coming down and across there? That's a, the dotted lines, which is what kind of?
That's, it's secondary.
And all the way, yeah.
And then linking up back over...
I guess, I don't want to keep, it's been a long day. I guess what I'm saying is I've still got concern about the prox, how, what is the primary east-west corridor, and are we getting it relatively in place? Is it a priority? And is it the best pick? And so I, I think we need to think more about that alignment. It's, I think it's incredibly important. People are going to want off Davis, and I don't know if Park can handle the bike lane, or when it's scheduled, but...
Yes, yes. And that's why it was identified over to Lorne. And then it's the tricky part of getting through here, that Counselor Taylor you're raising.
Right.
And whether you drop down to, and I can't read these anymore in my...
I think that's Park.
Park?
Or you go up. Up is, I think, perhaps preferable, but then, then don't you, why not stay on Queen all the way? Why come down to Shrigley? Queen all the way over, and so...
Well, we, we, yeah, Queen, Queen is here, and it does cross the river, and that's why it's, it's an important linkage. This one does not cross the river at the moment, but Queen does on, on the bridge.
Right.
That's why it was more desirable from a, a more imminent linkage.
But it's not in the one-to-five year?
No, because it wasn't part of the...
Construction.
Capital projects that were aligning up for the, for the one-to-five-year period.
Okay. Again, I think I reached a long, I just, I don't know if we, if everybody else around this table is really good and satisfied with that we've got a great understanding of how we're getting quickly to a east-west bike corridor. I'm just not still getting it completely. I see what you're pointing out, I just, I don't know. Anyway, I'll leave it there.
I think you've raised some issues on even on road connectivity east-west, the fact that beside Davis Drive and Queen Street, really, it's the only two areas where you're going to see that connectivity. And we see that, that congestion right now with traffic going east-west, and so you're not the only one there.
Yeah. So I think what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong through you, Mr. Mayor, is that there's a need for more priority in this area, and whether we're dropping down to Park, or whether we're making the connection along Simcoe down to Queen. But you're wanting to see some priority.
Should it stay on Queen out to whatever that is, Rockford, or should it come down to Shrigley? Which one's better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Prentice?
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, that it is, it does, it is a juggling act between what's available now, when construction will occur, and that it is also, as been said previously, it's a document at this point in time. And over the long term, as development occurs on Davis Drive, we're hopeful that, at least along the Davis Drive corridor, there'll be a section of secondary streets that'll give a more contiguous. The section through the middle of town where we don't have the bridge over the train tracks and over the river will always really be a problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, well, I think there's still one more slide on bonusing. Did we clarify that, or any questions with respect to that kind of slide?
I had that slide at the end, in the event that questions did come up around bonusing. These are the types of things that we had identified as the items that would be available for bonusing, over and above what is already required by the plan. And by, by what I'm saying there is that if you already have to do a certain amount of park dedication, sorry, did I knock it off?
No.
Sorry, thank you. If there was, you know, someone can, can bonus over and above the parkland dedication, they could also, you know, over and above the affordable housing quota that we're asking for and so on. So these are the types of things that we'd identified as eligible for, for bonusing.
No cash.
And cash, actually, that's a good comment. And I got that comment recently from one of our, our landowners, that they should, we should also provide for cash and lieu. And my version has that already written in. And so there's a few other items like that that we could improve upon.
Public amenities and recreational facilities, public art, et cetera, I think, has a much longer lifespan than cash.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, like another, another, another one that, that isn't on the list, and I think has to be on that list, is, is land to be, or land, or not land so much as, as funding toward the implementation of the Act of Transportation Network. Things like bridges that are outside of the, sort of the scope of the development itself, but if you dedicate money toward that bridge, that's an eligible item.
Riverwalk.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Prentice?
There was one other matter that I think that you and Counselor Hempen raised, and that's with respect to, once the official plan is adopted, how does, and I think Counselor Emanuel, how does the municipality proceed in terms of its planning from there? And like, secondary plan, and the, eventually the review of the entire official plan, is then normally followed up with a number of studies. And we have planned for these and budgeted for them, and we're about a year behind, because we expected that our secondary plan would be done sometime last year. But the next step are to do servicing studies as to what services need to be addressed in terms of downstream, water, sewer, roads, sanitary. Those studies are all updated to reflect the new development plan that council adopts. In other areas, such as in the community services, the playbook that looks at the programming, and we have preceded the secondary plan with a document that talks about the park needs and standards for the town. So there is a number of steps that will be taken. I guess also, and we'd say in the corporate services, they're undertaking the DC study update. That DC study update will be done again in another four or five years to represent some of the servicing studies that are done. And also the corporate, pardon me, the capital financing strategy. So a number of these follow through in terms of what builds the community beyond adopting the secondary plan, and will follow in the subsequent months and a couple of years.
Thank you. And then, coming back to the bonusing item, the, having an understanding of what's meaningful in the marketplace as to how many floors are sufficient incentive to, to, for the developers to consider the bonusing options as well. Good. Okay, no further questions then? I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Counselor Emanuel, seconded by Counselor Spolga. All those in favor? That is carried. Great discussion.